Hello, how are you?
Very good, thank you. And yourself?
Good, thank you.
Good.
I'm assuming that when we get to it, the two of you would like to speak about your impressions of the interviews with the different consultants.
Sure.
Certainly.
Hi Jess.
Hi, I think I've forgotten how to use Zoom.
That's not a bad thing.
That darn mute button.
Laura, I bumped into your family at the baseball field tonight.
They never told me. I hope they were behaved.
Baseball has started.
Oh, I know. We missed our first practice last night because of the rain.
Yeah, luckily I switched mine today, so we ended up getting our first one in.
Very nice. Oh, you're coaching?
Yeah, I'm coaching Oskar this year.
Oh, very good. Oh, Brian, is there anything you can do?
The nice part is it's kind of the same thing. So it's like I did Dawson last year in the same league and functional, so.
That's what I'll be seeing plenty of games and practices then on the field.
We're just waiting a minute for Mr. Schoolenbrini. I wonder if we should get started. And by the time we're done with all the beginning stuff, he will probably be here.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
All right, so as a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham, Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chair, Ms. Carol Ashambo.
Yes.
Vice Chair, Mr. Brian Leighton.
Yes.
Secretary, Mrs. Laura Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Sophie Shapiro.
Yes.
Mr. Schoolenbrini. Not here yet. And I don't believe I saw our student representative, Sean Delaney.
I think Tony just arrived also. Oh, and then he went there.
Mr. Schoolenbrini, can you respond in the affirmative that you can hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording Secretary, Ms. Susan Summers.
Yes.
Business Manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy.
Yes.
Director of Special Services, Mrs. Hanscom.
Yes.
Lunenburg Middle High School Principal, Mr. Tim Santry.
Yes.
Behavioral Health Coordinator, Jamie Millet. Her softball game, she's a coach, her softball game this evening was, the time was rescheduled. She's hopefully going to be joining us shortly. Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Annika Scott.
Yes.
Our Title I Coordinator, Mrs. Deirdre McLean. And I think Deirdre was going to join us a little bit later too. Our LEA President, Ms. Lisa LeBlanc.
Yes.
Mentor Program Coordinator, Mr. Tim Shays Green.
Yes, hello.
Our LHS Science Teacher, Dawn Garen. See Dawn yet. And our high school, middle school foreign language teacher, Ms. Jessica Beardmore.
Yes.
All right, and I'll turn it back to you now, Mrs. Ashambo.
Alrighty. Good evening, everyone. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming on Facebook Live at a later time. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, public meetings may be conducted. There we go. Remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference, via Zoom, as posted on the town's website identifying on how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. So I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. And after they conclude their remarks, I will ask if any of the members have any comments or questions or motions to provide. Please hold until your name is called. Remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. And each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So our first item on the agenda is executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining or contract negotiations with union personnel. So do I have a motion to go into executive session? Mrs. Kelly?
I will make a motion to go into executive session at 6:06 PM.
And a second, please.
I'll make a second.
I'll second that motion.
And a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schoolenbrini?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Forgot I was muted. I think we may be back then.
We are.
All right, then we are going to continue with our agenda. The next thing on the agenda is the Chair's Report. First, I'd like to thank everybody for their ultimate patience waiting for us. That was a longer session than I had anticipated and we appreciate your patience. But for the Chair's Report, I just have a few scheduling items. Next week, May 4th, we have a regularly scheduled meeting. I will be late, hopefully joining at the very end of the meeting. Mr. Layton will chair the meeting. Mrs. Kelly is unable to attend as well. We will have a quorum, but if anybody else finds they cannot attend, please let myself or Dr. Burnham know. Because we will have to figure out an alternate date. We will be reviewing Superintendent's evaluation on May 18th. I'm asking that the committee get their evaluations in to me by the weekend. Town meeting is on May 7th and the town meeting is on May 21st. We need everyone to exercise their right to vote at both the election and town meeting. I'd also like to congratulate the primary school for a very well attended and successful literacy night on April 13th. I wandered through. Everybody was busy. There was a lot to do. Everybody looked happy. So I thank them for that. Now it's time for public comment. And this is, I want to remind the public that the first public comments section is for agenda items only. The second public comments, comment session, section, is open to any topic within the scope of authority of the school committee. Public comments about individual students are prohibitive to protect the privacy of the student per state and federal law. So is there anyone that has a public comment this evening? You can use your hand raising Zoom power. I'm not seeing any hand raising Zoom power.
Nor am I.
All right, then we're going to assume there are no public comments. Next, we have review and approve minutes. We have minutes from the April 6th meeting, the regular session, and the workshop meeting on the 23rd of March. Has anybody had any comments about any of those minutes?
So we did hear from Mr. Layton with some questions relative to the minutes from the 3:23 session. So I'm suggesting that we pass over those for now until we can clarify and correct
Okay.
those minutes. Mr. Layton, would you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, then we're looking to approve the minutes from the regular session on April 6th. Do I have a motion? Mr. Layton?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 6th meeting.
And do I have a second? Mrs. Kelly?
I will second that.
And a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. School and Brainy?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly? Yes. Mr. Layton?
Yes.
And Mrs. O'Shambo?
Yes. Thank you very much. Next, we have to review and approve line item transfers. Mr. Cassidy?
Let me try to share a screen.
Great.
If you can. Okay, so tonight we've got two transfers in front of the school committee. One for $19,941. Funds are being, coming from coaches, the substitute, high school substitutes, and three facilities and ground accounts all in that are all in surplus. Funding is going to special detail for athletic events, so that is specifically for any police detail that is needed. So that, that budget is a little bit up this year. And then some additional money is needed in our long-term substitutes and regular substitutes at the elementary school. We've, we've had some attorney leaves in that building. So we're trying to refill the funding in those accounts. And then finally, there are three facility and ground accounts. Contracted services, which is basically a facility contracted services that, that is increased due to a, some work that was done on the, some blowers at the HVAC blowers at, at the middle high school and a kitchen repair at the primary school. Heating charges, natural gas is going up this year, so we're projecting enough money in that account to carry us until the end of the year. And then a vehicle replacement, an additional $16.56. That was for some tires and some oil changes that were needed for our vehicles. The next transfer for your consideration tonight is at the middle school. The, they're shifting some surplus money around for the purchase of the iXL learning platform for the middle school students. And once again, these, the accounts that they're coming from are all surplus accounts that are making it happen and then shifting an additional surplus account from the high school to cover that $8,500. So those are the two transfers that in front of you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Does anyone have any questions about any of those transfers? Mr. Layton?
I said a comment. I liked the, the way you presented it tonight and I think it was great for the, for the public to see it too.
Thank you. I was going to ask some feedback at the end of the meeting, but okay, I'll, I'll continue to do that. Thank you.
So do I have a motion to approve the line item transfers? Mr. Layton?
Make a motion to approve the line item transfers as presented.
Ms. Shapiro?
I'll second that motion.
And a roll call vote, please.
Mr. School and Brainy?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Shambo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we have the superintendent's report.
If I can locate it. Let's see. All right, so the COVID update. Right now positivity rate in Lunenburg as of April 22nd is at 3.2%. Massachusetts as of today is at 4.58%. Our district weekly case numbers. I can give you numbers for the last few weeks. The weekend ending March 25th, we had six. Weekend ending April 1st was seven. The weekend ending April 15th was 11. Of course, the following week was vacation and as of today, we have 12. Vaccination rate at the primary school, we're at 48% fully vaccinated. Turkey Hill is at 59%. Middle school at 65% and the high school at 75%. A few reminders, today is Administrative Professionals Day. So I want to offer a special shout out and thank you to all of our secretaries for all that they do. Just foreshadowing here, next week we have Teacher Appreciation Week. Parents should be on the lookout for a family communication survey that will be coming out via email. May 4th is our next school committee meeting and a reminder that all of our meetings through the end of the year will be via Zoom. And right now planned with a 6:00 PM start. And I just want to make the, the committee as well as the community aware, some of the topics that will be on agendas through the end of this year include the communication survey results, a little bit of a presentation from our high school guidance department, school and district handbooks, superintendent evaluation as already mentioned by the Chair, the retiree tribute. And once again, as a reminder, the town manager will be joining our meeting tentatively on June 1st to talk with us more about the future of the Turkey Hill Elementary School. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. I just looked quickly. I don't believe that we have a student representative. So we will move on to the curriculum, adoption, ELA, math, and SEL.
So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Scott.
Thank you. Am I able to share? Looks like I can.
You should be.
Okay, thank you. So we are here to recommend a program for curriculum adoption for math literacy and for SEL. I want to start with our process for selecting each of these programs. So starting with math, we joined Desi's evaluating, selecting and evaluating high quality materials network earlier this year. And through that network, the, myself, Kevin White and Amy Roboyne were attend the leaders meetings. And we established a council, I think I mentioned this in a previous presentation, made up of math teachers in the district who are listed here. This council worked hard to help us through the process. You'll see some of these slides come right from Desi because when we worked with the council this year, we pulled off information that was provided to us through that network. And so the theory of action here is that if schools and districts have the right high quality standards aligned culturally responsive curricular material and a sustainable collaborative professional learning structures, help teachers to use those materials and to orchestrate student learning experiences skillfully, then teacher and student experiences and ultimately student outcomes will improve. So we are involved in the learn, prepare and investigate and select phases of the process this year. And next year we'll move into the launch, implement and monitor. We went over with our council what materials can do and what they cannot. Our council helped us to determine priorities, develop an instructional vision and guide our decision-making. We used Ed Reports and Curate, two organizations which rank curriculum materials to select first a shortlist and then later to narrow that down to just three programs that we were going to pilot. Our timeline started in November where we established our goals, moved into developing parameters, writing vision, developing priorities and then piloting in the wintertime and early spring. It was a rather fast process, but not, not as fast as a literacy process. We were up against deadlines to apply for grants, which is why we had to move along quickly. In fact, we had to get our final decision in before April break. So that kind of dictated our process, but we didn't know that we would need to get those decisions in before April break until late in February. We used some of the curriculum literacy materials with our council to inform us on what does constitute high quality. And we worked with the GM board. We went over the frameworks and standards navigator in order to do that. We started with the parameters here that we needed the materials to be K through five. They had to be high quality, digital and paper and meet expectations in all areas on Ed Reports and Curate. We looked through our local lens to develop our district priorities, which would be specific to our students. And we came up with the following priorities. As we were piloting each program, we measured the program against these specific priorities. So we collected both qualitative and quantitative data. We had a spreadsheet for each program that we were piloting with a list of these priorities down one column and teachers would write in as they piloted the pros and the cons and any questions they had pertaining to each priority specifically. Then we also sent out at the conclusion of each pilot a Google form which asked teachers to rate the program against each priority so we could collect that quantitative data as well. I did provide here a link out to Ed Reports and Curate if anyone was curious to take a look at how they rank programs. I'm going to show you a snapshot of that. Soon, we had a field test schedule which click on here laid out the weeks. It was a lot for the teachers taking on, you know, essentially a, a preparation week to pilot a program, a week of intense piloting and then a follow-up week where they kind of debriefed about the program they had just piloted and got ready for the next pilot. So it was pretty intense and I appreciate all of the work the teachers put in on this. So ultimately, we piloted three programs. We piloted My View by the publisher Savis, I Ready Classroom by Curriculum Associates and HMH Into Math. And we decided unanimously, the council all voted for HMH Into Math. You can see here, these are the results of the Ed Report. They meet expectations across the board and this is kindergarten through second grade and third through fifth grade as well in focus and coherence, rigor and mathematical practices and usability. This, this was kind of the presentation we summarized with the councils. These were some of the features of HMH Into Math that we really liked. Including a family room, one of the things that we're really keeping in mind is how we can communicate with families about these programs and have them get a peek into what their student is working on. We took the qualitative data and kind of summarized it because we had a final meeting with the council to decide on these programs. Didn't just want to go with the data we collected. We wanted to go over it, allow the, any clearing up of misconceptions and then we voted. In terms of funding? In terms of funding, um, we're recommending Into Math. We already have been approved for Desi's Accelerating Math Opportunity. It's not a grant because they don't give the money to the district. They pay the vendor directly. Um, so we've been approved for the $52,947, which is what one year of Into Math will cost. Um, for digital paper materials and resources. And, um, this opportunity will also cover our costs for I-Ready Math Assessments and Personalized Learning Platforms for this year. Um, as well, we, we took that opportunity last year and we reapplied for the digital supplement as well. So that is our recommendation and funding source for math. When we found out that we had an opportunity to take advantage of a, an accelerating literacy grant in this case, um, we knew that it was going to be a quick turnaround, but Desi was prioritizing smaller districts who were using materials that were not high quality. And Lucy Cawkins is on the list of not being high quality. So we all agreed, teachers and administrators, that we needed to take advantage of this opportunity. Luckily, we had been in the network for math, so we followed the process just in a shorter timeline. Created a council, um, of teachers. Actually, I apologize, I didn't put in the kindergarten teachers. Um, I thought I did. We had, oh, we had Deb Z, Sheila Balada, and, um, Amy Raffielli helping us in kindergarten with the literacy. Again, same parameters for, for ELA that we were looking for. These are the non-negotiables. And then we came up with the same, a list of literacy priorities specific to our district. Again, as we were piloting, we, we started off with a longer list of programs that received, um, straight greens and Ed Reports. Narrowed it down to three programs and as we piloted, we measured each against these priorities, um, both quantitatively and qualitatively. Give you a quick glimpse at their pilot schedule, same thing. We piloted, um, three programs. One was My View by Savis. One was HMH Into Reading and then Wonders, which is put out by McGraw-Hill. Um, again, it was kind of a, a form of a week on, a week off. Teachers had access to, um, kits of paper materials. We had the online materials. In some cases, it was kind of a, a sample online program. And in other cases, we were able to load the whole school right onto Clever and have students have access. So that was great. HMH Into Reading is what our council ultimately decided on. It wasn't unanimous, but it was about 70% of the council voting for HMH. Um, again, straight greens in K through two and three through five in terms of meeting expectations. Some of the things we really liked about it here. Including embedded science and social studies standards. A summary of some of the, um, highlights and, and struggles. We did take into consideration at that time that we had chosen Into Math, but that was absolutely not. Um, we told the, the literacy council that they had free reign to choose another program that we did not have to go with the same program that math was going with. However, they did. And in terms of funding for this program, um, we have been approved, we already received a grant for $200,000 from Desi for three years of the digital and paper resources. Um, our quote for eight, from HMH has been approved and that quote is just over $2,000 by a little over $3,000. So we will be able to use the $200,000 to pay for the three years and then, um, local funds for the three plus thousand. Any questions on literacy or math before I go on to, uh, Trails and SEL?
Um, I'll, I'll jump in quickly. The, first off, I appreciate all this information and, and you know how I love curriculum. So I appreciate all those links because you know I'll go on them. But, um, just a, a question. It, this particular, um, literacy grant funding. So it's going to cover the digital and paper materials and resources, but not everything is consumable, is it? So like there will be some things that stay with you that you don't have to keep buying, like you're not looking at $67,000 a year.
Uh, no, well, so all our teacher materials and there's a, a very extensive teacher kit that comes with Into Reading. So those we won't have to renew each year. Um, the digital and the student consumables will need to be renewed each year. Um, I can look in, you know, we, we can work with the publisher to see what kind of deals we can work out. I, I know we all had to stick within the stipulations of the grant where normally they might recommend a six-year contract. So we can talk about, um, that moving forward with the publishers. And we've already talked as an administration about the, the fact that we need to budget for the student consumables in year four plus. But, you know, I'll, I'll also be on the, the lookout for, um, any grants to help us out along the way.
Sure thing. Any other questions from anyone? Sing out because I can't see you.
Yeah, it's Brian. Uh, I would just, uh, echo what Carol said. It would be great to hear what the long-term plan is, um, after the, the grant funding is run out.
We're, we're talking about, you know, using curriculum adoption money, local funds and, and keeping in mind how much we will need. And, and definitely Carol's right that it, there will be a large chunk that we won't have to renew. Um, but there's certainly, I mean, the, the latest with almost every program is that students have consumables. It's actually great because they can mark up right on the stories and, in literacy and the, the standards, you know, based instruction is right there in the margin, but, um, but certainly that costs money. So we'll, we'll need to definitely plan for that each year.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to switch on over to Trails. So in terms of SEL, we were looking for a tier one program and, um, had considered programs like Second Step and such. Um, but found this Trails to Wellness Program and decided to pilot it because it offered us tiers one, two, and three as a multi-tier approach um, to support mental health and SEL. Trails is rooted in cognitive behavioral therapy principles, which sounds overwhelming since it's meant to be delivered by teachers, but it's very user-friendly as we have found. Um, and this is the, the kind of the CBT cycle, think, feel, and do that they introduce as the students are very young and continue throughout the program. The Trails curriculum meets all CASL standards and is, um, and CASL is a Desi-endorsed SEL framework. We included, oops, no, she didn't include things. Okay, hold on, sorry. Um, we included a list here of the, the lessons. So with tier one, there are 20 lessons and they come as a grade band. So, um, K through two, you know, lesson four, K through two, there's a lesson on understanding emotions. And then there's a lesson on understanding emotions for three through five, six through eight, and then high school. And at first we were concerned because we said, ah, is it going to be boring for, you know, third grade to have the lesson in fourth grade? But actually, the lessons really lend themselves to the students in front of you and how the discussions go. So it, it is, um, not a concern. And we, we spoke with, um, John Crocker from Methuen and, and Methuen is kind of the, the guru, the leader in, in SEL practices. And, um, he 1,000% recommended Trails and said they've never had an issue with the grade bands. Um, we could designate certain lessons for certain grade levels over time if we, if we see fit. That would be one option where we, we would definitely want to have, you know, lessons one through five repeated each year. For tier two, they also offer, um, more specific resources for smaller groups that we've been using. Our guidance councils have been using this year with some of their groups. And they offer us, um, support for targeted interventions as well. Again, it's for all students. In fact, um, we've been using it in guidance classes this year as a pilot in grades K through eight. Uh, but Trails could be delivered school-wide if you wanted to. In fact, um, we've decided next year, we're recommending that we pilot this in high school through advisory. So we'll need to have all the teachers trained in Trails. But the lessons are so very user-friendly. And, um, and even beyond that, Ms. Millet and I are going to, um, break them down even further and have the links, you know, in a, a couple of slides ready for the teachers. So we're saving them some work there. Again, it's grade K through 12. Now we're starting to, um, give you some snapshots of what the materials look like. So really easy, you know, emoji style faces for students to identify with. We've, um, observed multiple classes, um, multiple kindergarten classes, in fact, of the, the young students identifying their feelings. And it is so awesome to see, you know, a kid identifying that they're medium sad one day and a little bit happy and tell, tell you why. And then as the years go on, they recognize, you know, yes, I remember identifying my feelings and I'm going to move on and do this again the next year. They stick with, um, age-appropriate resources too. So you see here in grade bands three through five, they move on to like a feelings thermometer that kids can relate to. And then in grade six through 12, it becomes a check-in sheet where, okay, I have these three feelings today. And they, then we kind of discuss them as a group or individually. So we provided a lesson on unhelpful thoughts. Um, at the three through five level, for example, the lesson would be doing a, being an ant detective. So, um, what, what are we looking for in terms of, um, our thoughts? Are they, are there evidence that supports, is there evidence that supports that this thought or evidence against it? What are the facts? What would I tell my friend? So the level of grades three through five. Then moving on with the same concept, um, you know, detective practice. And then in the older grades, it becomes that, you know, your thoughts are possibly thinking traps, which I think is so important for kids to understand that, you know, something like blowing things out of proportion is actually a, a thinking trap called catastrophizing or magnification. And they can understand, oh, I feel that way. Other people feel that way. Here's what it's called. Now I can, you know, work through it. And then at the older grades, you're working on some coping practice. Some examples for self-care, what it looks like in three through five, talking about mind, heart, and body. And then in six through 12, it becomes Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs and more specific. And then forming a self-care plan with the older kids in the smaller groups would be how a tier two might look. So after our pilot this year, um, we collected some data and 71% of parents at, um, the primary school reported children coming home and sharing information about what they had learned. And 93.6% reported a moderate to high level of satisfaction with the Trails curriculum. Some positive comments about it that we collected from the primary school survey. Again, all positive comments in, in three through eight on Trails and percentages. So we are recommending, um, moving forward with this. We've already paid for Trails because we were in the pilot and we, um, understand that we have no additional cost to have up to 80 more staff trained by December 31st. So our, our recommendation is to have the high school staff trained on a November PD day. Ms. Miller and I will introduce Trails on the, the PD day before the first day of school to get teachers started with it. We got, do already have access to some of the materials. And then, um, and, and the guidance staff has already been trained in K through eight. So they'll be able to proceed with those classes and we'll start doing the once a month, um, kind of Trails Tuesday, once or twice a month. We're going to see how it goes at the high school. Any questions on, on Trails? I'm happy to provide additional links if anyone wants to take a look at the materials because they're excellent.
Um, does anyone have any questions about this program? Um, I don't have any questions. I, I think you've been incredibly busy to put these programs all together.
It is just me. It's everybody in the district.
Um, this, this sounds wonderful.
I, I also wanted to, um, give, uh, a shout out to, um, Deirdre McLean, Amy Reboin, and Jamie Millet, who, um, were essential in, in organizing these pilots and in working with teachers on, on planning for them and understanding what materials were available. We, we absolutely could not have evaluated these programs without those three individuals.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I think what we need to do is to move on then. Um, do we have to vote?
Could I? I would, I would appreciate, um, a vote approving that, um, adoption.
All right. Is there someone that would like to make a motion to approve the adoption of curriculum in these areas? Mrs. Kelly?
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the curriculum outlined by Mrs. Scott this evening.
And a second? Ms. Shapiro?
Motion.
All right, and a roll call vote?
Mr. School and Brini?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshambo?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks so much for all that work. That's wonderful. Um, now we move on to the school committee equity goal. When we talked about our goals for this year, we said we wanted to do an equity audit. And, um, the superintendent found three companies to talk to us about their programs in doing so. And you have that information in the packet, um, about those three different companies. And, um, Mrs. Kelly and I spoke to representatives from each of those three companies. And we were totally and completely impressed with one of the companies and the other two not as much. So I'm going to let Mrs. Kelly speak on this, um, because she was very vocal about her excitement. So go right ahead.
Oh, there's just, um, I'm not going to speak negatively about the other two who presented. They were very informative. They were very, um, willing to work. Um, it was this outstanding person who came and gave a presentation that just made you excited about the work she wants to do. She has this personality that you're just drawn to and you want to get involved with what she is saying. Um, she came at us with already had done research about, um, the district. She came at us with numbers. She came at us with the numbers that made her excited and the numbers that she wants to work on. And I think she will do phenomenal work. And I think the most important thing is that everyone's going to want to work with her. Like Carol and I have already said, we want to go to some of these things. Um, just, and, 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 and you know, she, I, I write up on some of the work she's done in other districts. And, um, she's just this powerful force of nature that I think is going to do amazing things for our district.
Uh, one of the things I really liked about, this is the equity process. Um, if you're looking at your information. Um, one of the things I really liked about this program, besides how excited she got and, and that she had done her homework and, and she wanted to learn from us. How, um, she commented on, uh, very high scores for our ELL population. And how did that happen? And what did we do? And she was so excited. Um, but besides that, her proposal spends more time in district. You know, it, it, you got a feeling like she wanted to know what our district was like and that she wasn't going to make any recommendations, um, until she, she knew. Um, not just her, obviously. She has teams, just not her. But, um, one of the other programs was very, okay, this is day three, we must be doing this. That kind of thing. And that incidentally was the most expensive program. This program is the one that fell in the middle. That kind of thing. And that, incidentally, was the most expensive program. This program is the one that fell in the middle. The the equity process that we liked so much. Her proposal is very well drawn out exactly what she's going to do, exactly how much the cost is for each of the phases and how it works. We were very impressed. So my only, or one other thing, she's talking about commitment to the work and an indication of this commitment to the work is that while she's working with you, she's looking for goodish, in quotes, goodish people behaviors. And and some of those goodish behaviors are to lean into your fears and embrace your hopes and dreams. Breathe deeply and pause when necessary. Speak your truth without malice. We lift each other. Things like that. She she has such this group had such a more personal look at how to help, not only look at equity, but how to help with culture as well. I mean, it all folds together. And the other thing that I I want to stress is by looking at equity and by looking at how we serve all of our kids, we are talking about rising student achievement. And when kids aren't getting the right message about themselves or staff isn't getting the right message about themselves, then they are not going to progress the way they should. And this work is so important and she really looks at it personally. And I think that's what impressed me the most. And the other people were quite good. There's no question, they would be competent, but I think this company is far above competent. It it I think they're they're quite superior, myself. My concern with this is the cost. And I am hoping that Dr. Burnham will be able to tell us how we think we could afford this.
So I'll have Mr. Cassidy join as well. But my recollection is with this particular group that they would like to get ready to start on this work in June, if possible. So, you know, we do have some monies available in this year's budget. And we can also potentially allocate some of next year's PD budget. You know, if if we end up having to break down costs over the two fiscal years because the work is is happening that way. Mr. Cassidy, anything else you want to offer on that?
No, there are small pockets of funds that that are are becoming available just because we're closing up POs. We can consider school choice. But I I advise the superintendent, you know, this isn't like a we're not circumventing some sort of state law, but if they provide services in June, we have to pay them with this year's money. Anything after July is next year's money. So it's that, you know, so we we can break up those costs over two fiscal years, which will work to the advantage of the work that you want to do.
Does anyone in the committee have questions about any of this? Mr. School and Brini?
What's the the service's name?
The Equity Process.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Anything else? If there's nothing else, then
do we want to take a vote to authorize me to move forward with contracting with this particular consulting group?
That would be the next thing, I believe. Is there anyone that would like to make that motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to authorize Dr. Brennan to go ahead with getting contracts in place for the equity group to start their district.
And is there a second?
I'll say it.
Alrighty, then a roll call vote?
Mr. School and Brini?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton? Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Thank you all. I'm looking forward to this work.
Yes, I am so excited for you guys to meet her. She's seriously just amazing. Yeah, you're gonna love her.
I I do think this will bring a lot to the district. Okay, moving on, we have donated sick days and we need to have someone read a motion about the donated sick days. Mr. School and Brini?
I'll make the motion on the donated sick days.
Okay, there's there's a Mr. Cassidy, we have to use the words that you have there? Or will Tony's words suffice?
I guess specific number, I think, would be good.
Yeah, hold on a second. Yeah, it's donated sick day, twenty up to 20 donated sick days to be used intermittently.
Up to, hold on one second. I'm going to make a motion to approve the transfer of up to 26 days.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, then a roll call vote?
Mr. School and Brini?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then we have permission to post.
So this is Mike Cassidy, business manager, HR director. In front of the school committee tonight is a proposal of posting a social worker at the the primary school. And we had talked about at at the administrative level and even during the the budget cycle of adding an additional social worker down at the primary to help with emotional behaviors of students. This opportunity is only presented to us because we feel that an additional kindergarten teacher, which was budgeted in the budget, will not be necessary at this time for for next school year. The current numbers for kindergarten enrollment is 105 as of as of today, which is on or exactly what was the the number last year at this time. And we don't anticipate needing that that extra classroom of teachers in in that para. So this is part of the the budget that's going in front of the town meeting. It's it's a new position. We would like to to get a jump on posting that position. It will be a hard to fill position. And we want to get as many applicants as possible. Even under the best case scenario, we would, if we posted immediately and do interviews, we probably would not be able to offer before town meeting. But I can guarantee you an offer will not be provided to a finalist. And so it's it's approved at a town meeting on our on May 7th. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But that's that is in front of the school committee tonight.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cassidy? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept this request to post? Mrs. Kelly?
I'll make a motion to approve to post this position of a social worker at the primary school.
Mr. Leighton?
Second that motion.
All right, then a roll call vote, please.
Mr. School and Brini?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we have teacher diversification DSE presentation.
So we have been participating this year in a program through the Department of Ed on teacher diversification. We established a team to participate in this program. Mr. Santry is part of this team. Mr. Shays Green, bringing his mentor coordinator lens, is part of this team. Mrs. LeBlanc, bringing the lens of the union, is also part of this team. Mrs. Hanscom, myself and Mr. Cassidy from central office. So we've put together a few slides to give you a bit of an overview of the work that we've been engaging in and our our perspective on things. So I'll turn it over now to Mr. Cassidy. Do you want to share your screen? Or would you like me to share the screen?
I'll share my screen, just if I could just have one second.
Yep.
For some reason, it's taking over my my entire thing here. And I've got notes. I've got notes that that had in in word that I was going to present to you. So let's see if and it's not printing. So that's grand. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So the 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 presentation today is going to touch on three areas of part of this the strategic action plan for the the superintendent. It's it's hiring diversification and the retention of staff in the Lunenburg Public Schools. So you know, the the term that this group we've been using is making sure that our house is in order before we start moving forward. And you know, this is work that has been set aside, but I'm speaking for the hiring part, just due to COVID and and realizing that just the general challenges that we've had filling positions in the district. So it looks like things are behind us and we've got a few things coming together. And you'll see what we're talking about in a minute. But it's really taking a look at the the human resource office and creating some hiring and staff initiatives over over the next few years to build a stronger educated workforce within our district. And part of it is, you know, these are just some general terms. I'll just, I'm going to throw out you. So we're going to be following our current employee trends. So the the HR office will be looking at what what other districts are doing, what other platforms are out there, what what does, what do new educators look like as we begin our recruitment? We'll identify high needs of area of recruitment. And that will include looking at our current workforce and taking a look at maybe challenges that we'll have hiring for hard to fill positions. Or maybe we're anticipating more administrative positions that are being open over the next few years. And what type of candidates are we going to be looking for for those types of positions? Probably the big thing we're going to be looking at is looking at creating a a best practice when we're hiring new employees. And that best practice is going to look different from from a hard to fill teacher to a secretary, to a paraprofessional, a custodian, in a calf worker. So we've got to dig a little bit deep deeper into you know, you know, what our structured interviews look like. Establishing essential functions for positions. Creating a database of questions that an interview committee can use when they're interviewing applicants for the essential functions that we're identifying for these positions. So it's it's good work. It's it's really exciting. Well, at least I'm getting excited about it. Because the 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 result is really quality applicants coming in or coming into the district. So planning and outreach for recruitment for qualified and diverse candidates. And this is when we talk about outreach and recruitment, we're talking about participating in recruitment fears, which seem seem to be coming back this year, which is is great. There's been, over the last few years, they've been virtual. But there've been many in-person recruitment fears in this. So we want to participate in those and recruit people from other parts of the state. And even there's job fears in this area that we want to make sure that that people know that we have positions here. We also want to build partnerships with community groups, universities. So they know that we have job opportunities for people that that might be looking for jobs within their their groups. And then we'll be enhancing our participation in diverse events. And that may be, that may be being part of organizations. It may be part of recruitment fears. It may be part of panels. So it's, there's some areas of growth in in those areas of recruitment. So I'll just tell you that we, as Kate, as Dr. Burnham had, has has mentioned that we are participating in teacher diversity a program with the state. And this is, this is a slide that they had provided during one of their presentations about the imbalance of students of of color and student, the the other areas of employment and where they represent those areas. So as you can see, it's the state has a lot of work to do. It's just not Lunenburg. It's just not Fitchburg. It's 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 an issue throughout the state. And and this does pose a challenge for Lunenburg because there are numbers of diverse students has been growing over the last 15 years. So we do have a higher percentage of group of diverse students that we want to connect with as as we get into the classroom. I think I'm going to turn the 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 presentation over to Lisa.
Thank you. So Lisa LeBlanc, I'm the LEA president and really appreciated working with this group. Just a lot of good conversations back and forth and and really appreciate. Just a lot of good conversations back and forth and really appreciate that Desi allowed us this opportunity. So Desi's diversification strategy, they're obviously the ones running the group. Their main focus is to help districts. You can see in that first bullet, you know, providing from some financial support and incentives for recruiting at the kind of that larger systematic level in the districts. Proactively advertising the benefits of becoming an educator, which I think is great across the board. It's been a tough couple of years. And there's a lot of places looking to hire educators. So there's some significant benefit, you know, across the board in doing that. The last part, it's okay, Mike, that you move forward because the last part here is, I think, the most important and it's, it's on the next slide as well. That really what we need to do is improve the experience that students and teachers of color or students and teachers from diverse backgrounds have in our schools. We see that percentage up to 17, over 17% of our students come from diverse ethnic or racial backgrounds. And we need to be more representative of the students that we spend our days with. So that's Desi's strategy. And then if you go to the next slide, Mike, the MTA is also very invested in this work. So specifically a couple, I guess it would just be a month ago or so. In the middle of March, some legislation was supported by the MTA. It's called an Act Relative to Educator Diversity. The goal is to help find ways to recruit educators of color from diverse backgrounds who can take, find a new way into a role in the classroom and then grow and recruit, retain educators that help better reflect our students. And hopefully for us to be able to speak to our students and get them to be interested in becoming teachers. A lot of, you know, we're all former students ourselves and we saw something in the classroom that we wanted to be, something that we wanted to do. We want our students and people who spend time in our schools to feel the same way. We do need to make sure that we take care of all of our staff as colleagues. You know, so from on the teacher level, my focus, I know that Tim Shays Green will speak about this as well, is to make sure we're supporting our colleagues both inside of school and then outside of school, providing opportunities for groups to get together, for people to make connections with other educators who are like themselves, who focus on things that they focus on. And then ultimately, as Mike said, to get our house in order, to make sure that we are developing a climate and culture that's supportive of our educators, supportive of our students, of all of our students and that we are doing right by everyone who steps into our school buildings.
Mike, I'm going to ask you to go to slide eight first. The next slide. Because I think it just, it just goes a little bit in order from my line of thinking. So, good evening, I'm Julianna Hanscom, I'm the Director of Special Services and I'm also a part of the group. So what are we doing right now to help support this work? So we, like, what has been said, we are participating in the diversification professional learning community. We actually have three more workshops left before the end of the school year. And our group, just to let you guys know, this isn't just an hour long workshop that we go to. It's about three hours, three to three and a half hours at a block at times. So it's, it's really great to be able to dive in and have that chunk of a day to be able to really get into the work and learn from the people at Desi and from their presenters on how we can go about helping the district move forward with these initiatives. The other things that we're currently doing is this year, our Equity Advisor Committee, we facilitated a book study by CAST, the Book Study of CAST by Isabel Wilkinson. And then the other thing that you, it's all wrapped in through Kate, Dr. Burnham's Strategic Action Plan for this year. And you can see the three areas that, that we feel that the work that we're currently doing reflects this. Okay. So what do we need to do for the future? What are we looking at for the future? So Mike, if you can go back to the previous slide. So what we, what we're finding that we think need to happen, what needs to happen is we need to understand why teacher racial and ethnic diversity matters to the students in our district. Okay, why does it matter? And I think with the percentages and with the higher percentages and what Mrs. LeBlanc talked to, I think it reinforces the need that we need to move in this direction and to understand why. We also need to look at auditing our current talent management processes and understanding our staff and look to set goals so that we've got everybody on board on this initiative. And then we need to look at what practices do we maybe need to adjust and edit along the way to help, to help flourish this, this initiative. And then we do know that we need to create a long-term diversification strategy. And I think we've seen through Kate, through Dr. Burnham's Strategic Action Plans, the benefits of having those long-term plans, right? Where you can actually see and measure in the scope of not just one year, but two, three, four, sometimes even five years. Where do we need to go in that timeframe? And I think it really helps, I think it will really help to set the district in a path along this to meet these goals.
Okay, so hello, I'm Tim Shays Green and I'm a seventh grade teacher and I'm also the mentor coordinator. And it has been an absolute pleasure to be on this group. And, you know, working with Desi and working with, you know, the group of professionals in Lunenburg on, you know, diversification and, you know, and, and, and making, you know, Lunenburg an even better place for kids and for, for staff to work here and that sort of thing. So, you know, what, as the mentor coordinator, which I've been doing for quite a few years, you know, there's a lot of things that I think we've done well. You know, we, we go a lot over best practices and classroom management and the evaluation system. We go through, you know, collaboration, curriculum development and all these sorts of things. But one of the new focuses that we've really realized is critically important is, you know, having, having this culturally, culturally proficient, cultural proficiency training and really making that a big part of what we do, you know, as a district to help prepare educators so that, that Lunenburg can be an even more terrific place for all different types of students with, with different types of backgrounds. So, you know, in our mentoring program, you know, and as educators, it's, it's, we're lifelong learners. We always want to be growing, developing, making Lunenburg the best place that it can be for kids, for students, for parents, the community. And so, you know, through data collection, through the mentoring program and through this, you know, retention strategy that we're going to be developing and continue to develop and, and reflecting on and refining and through a professional development that's focused on cultural proficiency, we think we can get there, but it's going to take some work and it's important work that we're invested in. So we're, we're going to, Dr. Burnham and I have had quite a few conversations and then others in the group as well around, you know, how we could enhance or make the mentoring program even better. So one thing that we, we think we do very well right now is we have a very robust program for our first year educators. And what we want to do is really want to extend that more for the second and third year educators as well. Having, you know, more opportunities for them to, you know, have that professional learning community where they get together and they talk about practices and they talk about what's working well and assessments. And also naturally talking about building this, this cultural proficiency within, within Lunenburg. So this is the pilot program that we're thinking of for next year is to having, you know, implementing this, this more robust setup for our second and third year educators in the district so that they can, you know, find success and find Lunenburg a great place to be in and foster this type of climate that we want and want to stay here for, for the long term. I think, you know, and obviously we'll provide additional mentor training, which we've been doing all along, but we'll, we'll make that, that element of the program a little bit more robust as well. And so one of the things that we talked about as well, you know, to foster, you know, again, the goal is to foster this environment that's accepting of others and to make Lunenburg the best place to be. We know that there's a lot of positives right now because we've had these, you know, testimonials from various educators. And I, I, you know, I've given multiple surveys and one of the questions that I recently asked was, what supports have you found helpful during your time as an educator in the Lunenburg Public Schools? We've heard some wonderful things like, you know, having a mentor or two has made things a lot easier because then I know exactly who to go to when I have a question. They've been so open and willing to help with anything regardless of what the problem was. Not going to read through them all, but you know, another is administration has been very supportive. I have also felt supported from members of the LEA with questions or concerns that have come up throughout the year. So, you know, we hear really wonderful things about the, you know, the administrators being there for their, for their teachers and educators and the mentoring program working well. But we also, you know, in these surveys, we, we find that there's things that we can work on. And we're going to continue to, you know, ask questions, ask about their experience, ask about it, them to be open and honest so we can continue to improve. Some of these testimonials though, we intend on using it during the hiring process so that hopefully it will, you know, hearing some of these testimonials, this, you know, it's a firsthand account will attract a wider variety of educators and a larger pool of educators who want to come and work and to see what Lunenburg's all about. And again, it's been a pleasure to work, work in this group. I look forward to the continued work. And and I, you know, I've been working in Lunenburg for quite some time. And I think even more people need to see how wonderful it is to be here. So, and we want to, again, constantly improve, constantly make things the best they can be for the kids, you know, the educators, the community, everyone.
That's our presentation for this evening. I can't, I can't stop the presentation just to say that before I say that this is, this is a lot of work and it's going to take some time. But my perspective is that with the state helping out and possibly MTA and special legislation and fostering new young educators over, within years, you'll see some, some transition of, of teachers that really represent what the student population looks like. And so like I said, it's, it's going to take years. This isn't, and it's work. And I think the group that is here together tonight that, that's presenting is, is and will be on the forefront of trying to break down some barriers to, to move forward into this direction. Dr. Burnham, I think we inadvertently shut you out of the PowerPoint. But is there anything that you want, would like to add or just conclude?
I would echo the comments previously made that this has been a really fantastic group to engage in this work with. Mr. Santri also didn't have a presentation of any slides, so I'll open the door for Mr. Santri to add any comments that he would like to.
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but to reiterate, to work with this group of educators from Lunenburg was, was amazing, but it was also great that we represented Lunenburg as we worked with other districts in the state. We would work in breakout groups during Zoom meetings to understand what some challenges that other districts were facing and what opportunities they had and what we could learn from. And just being able to listen to those conversations from our colleagues across the state, I think was very meaningful. And I am looking forward to our next steps in our work with this, this very important work. Thank you, Dr. Burnham.
Thank you, Mr. Santri.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Leighton?
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. I think it's going to be really important to just expand our diversity and see the data as it progresses throughout the years. I even just appreciate Mr. Adams's emails where he includes multiple languages in his updates. But I think like when we have an educator who's bilingual and we have SEL students coming in, WEL students coming in, that they have that staff member that's there on day one that can communicate with them. It's going to make a big difference. And I think it's just all those small steps that add up together will be great. Also in regards to the mentors, I think that's an awesome idea to be one-to-one. I think it's going to be huge, not only just for the, the better relationships, stronger relationships too, but even just adding more mentors, giving more kind of leadership positions to our staff is going to really just expand the abilities of our staff too and just have them grow as well. So I'm excited for that as well. Thank you.
Other comments from the committee? Mr. Schoolenbrini?
I, I think that this initiative is super duper important. You know, like, one of the things that my kids noticed when they came to Lunenburg Public Schools was the fact that there was so much more diversity and they'd only ever been to private schools. And it was, it was really enjoyable for them to like work through that. One is seven and one is 11. And so I really commend you guys for doing this. This is exactly the kind of stuff that needs to be happening. And I also said, I want to say that, Mr. Shays Green, if you ever need another job, you can be a motivational speaker because you just have so much energy. It's incredible. So I'm glad that you guys are doing this work and I'm very grateful for it. So thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll put my two cents in. I, I think it's wonderful that the school has forged this relationship with Desi. I mean, there are so many opportunities and this was one that I really wasn't aware of. And I think this is wonderful work to be done. And I also have to say, I have a mentoring hat myself from my previous life. And you have your work cut out for you, Mr. Shays Green. But this is, this is good work. You are the right person to do it and very, very impressed with this. This, this is going to go a long way to help with all those other things we're trying to do with culture and equity. And this all fits so nicely. So I thank you all very much. Moving on, we have the District Model of Tiered Supports.
All right, so at this point, I would invite Mrs. Scott as well as Ms. Millet and Mrs. McLean to talk about our district's model of tiered support.
Annika, you're muted.
That is a rookie move. Take two. All right. It won't let me go back. Hold on. I'm sorry, I don't know why it won't let me turn. Hold on, let me go back to my.
I'm glad I'm not the only one that that happens to. It's like gremlins creep in at this hour.
Try this again. Okay. So we'd like to introduce the multi-tiered systems of supports that we are using and developing in district, both academically and behaviorally. What is MTSS? It's a three-tiered framework designed to meet the needs of all students. Not just about tiered interventions, but how the systems fit together to ensure high-quality education for all students. MTSS focuses on the whole child, provides targeted interventions and support for students who are struggling. And that includes whether they're struggling academically, behaviorally, or socially emotionally. We're going to get into, Ms. McLean is going to help me present the tiers momentarily, but this chart here shows that about 80% of students are but this chart here shows that about 80% of students are in tier one. Approximately 15% require targeted supplemental interventions in tier two. And then about 5% tier three, the intensive interventions.
And I'll just jump in here just to clarify that those percentages, those are not Lunenburg district percentages. That's the typical distribution that you would find in, in any place.
Correct. We did not, that, that is not our, our visual necessarily, but a broad representation. This is kind of the visual of MTSS from DESI. And I provided links here to the MTSS blueprint that the state has laid out for us. And then the DESI MTSS site, if anyone's interested in taking a look at those. I'm going to invite Ms. McLean to join me and talk about the framework and the tiers.
Sure. Thank you, Annika. Well, the key tenets of the, of having this type of framework, a multi-tiered framework ensures that, you know, all, because all students are capable of grade level learning with adequate support. That's a belief. I think that's a belief of the district. MTSS is rooted in proactivity and prevention model. Previously, many years ago, we were forced to wait until, until students failed before we could start intervening. And with the multi-tiered systems, that is no longer. We are able to balance, provide adequate supports so that we don't have students falling through the gap. I mean, any kind of gaps or cracks and we allow for, we're just proactive instead of reactive. This system utilizes evidence-based practices. Decisions and procedures are driven by the school and the student data. The degree of support given to students is based on their needs. And the implementation occurs more than just school-wide. This is, this is going to be a district-wide implementation and we, and which all stakeholders collaborate together. With tier one, all students are tier one. Every student begins at tier one. Tier one is the core, where core grade level expectations for academics, behavior, social, emotional regulation. And unfortunately, more, some, a few students need more support to achieve the standards than just tier one instruction. Tier two instruction, this is where we begin, like our intervention process. And in Lunenburg, we've divided our tier two kind of into two tiers. That tier two A, these are the strategic supports that we have for students who are like approaching or partially needing grade level standards. They're not very far behind their peers. At this stage, parents are notified and intervention and support is given, usually within the classroom by the classroom teacher. This progress is monitored and then brought to, be discussed at what we call a TST PLT. It's usually our common planning. It's a time where we can discuss in general student profiles of, profiles of students who are needing various supports. Tier two B are more strategic supports. This is for students who are generally more than a grade, 1.5 grade levels behind. And they've already gone through at least a four to six week intervention without making adequate process. I mean, progress. At this stage, you know, we will actually begin the SST process, which is a student support team and which we really begin documenting, documenting what is working, what is not working. It's a collaborative team to make decisions so that we can do what each individual, each individual child needs. And then tier three, a lot of people think tier three is just special education, but it is not just for special education. This is where a lot of special education services fall into, but students with disabilities may not need tier three services. And students without a disability may in fact need tier three supports. And so this, the student should be able to move fluidly through the tiers as needed. So like I said, movement among the tiers is fluid, not determined or defined by specific designations, such as like a diagnosed disability. All students should have access to supports when they need them. And, you know, I love the analogy that things like elevators and escalators, those are accommodations that were not necessarily made for the average population, but we all take advantage of them and we should all have access to them. And that's kind of the way I look at our MTSS process. Jamie? We can't hear you, Jamie. Sorry.
No, no. Can you guys hear me now?
Yep.
Sorry. I have some issues with my speaker on my laptop. Good evening, everyone. Hope you're having a good night. Sorry. I missed the Trails presentation earlier. A lot of this is a little bit of a review from my last presentation back in February. But essentially the behavioral health, mental health side of the MTSS system is, is the same as the academics in so many ways. I mean, we're looking to provide support to all students. I think Deirdre's made a really good point about that tier three piece is it's not just for those special education students. You know, it's fluid. Kids may need intensive supports and we can back off. But the goal is to have foundational skills embedded in SEL for kids for lifelong learning. And then we can also target those at-risk students through, you know, particular interventions at the tier two and tier three level. And then here, here's just a review. I know you guys have seen this in, in all of my presentations probably for the last year. But here's the, the triangle from a behavioral health standpoint. We were able to add a ton of new staff this year. And so this has allowed us to have universal systems and multi-tiered interventions that are universal across the district, which is new to us this year, having this new addition of staff. So again, you're looking at those tier three, which are those intensive services. That's really our one-to-one counseling, those case management, those really at-risk students. They may be special ed, they may be not. Again, we got percentages in there which are not specific to Lunenburg. Those are just specific to just general national data. And then tier two, this is where our Trails groups slide in. This also may be some other small group work that we're doing. And then tier one is that universal piece. So that's that tier one Trails curriculum that Annika and Deirdre presented on earlier tonight that we've adopted. It's also just that general best practice in the classroom where you're meeting those castle standards.
With the student support team, this is crucial to the success of an MTSS framework, very crucial. But for each school, each school will have, or has an SST team. And members that are on this team would be the building administrator, classroom teachers, at least one from each grade level. And this person will be like the grade level liaison, a content area specialist, lead interventionist, guidance counselor, social worker, special education teacher, and then other ancillary team members or related service providers. They are included in the meetings as needed. The purpose of SST is to design, is its design is to provide academic, social, emotional, and behavioral support to all students through a collaborative approach. It is based upon the premise that together we are better and together we are truly better, especially when it comes to meeting the need, the diverse needs of our Lunenburg students. There, with an SST process, we are current, currently trying to streamline it as a district to make sure that it works more smoothly and to better ensure that we have no students falling through the gaps as we move, as students move across grade level bands. There are six basic steps of the SST process, which will focus on individual student needs, the students' learning styles, the program effectiveness, and home and school communication. With this little triangle, the most important thing I want to show you is this, this cycle. It's a constant cycle that doesn't, you know, that is, we're constantly going back to problems and evaluating what we've done and making, it's just a continuous cycle. To define a problem, analyze what's happening, implement a strategy or plan, evaluate, is it working? If it's not working, we're not going to keep doing the same thing that's not working. We're doing something else. The first step of the SST process is to gather background information. This is one of the most important steps because the more student data and history that we have, the better we're able to provide adequate support. Where we get this information, when a student begins, is at the level of needing to be, you know, a teacher wants to refer a student for SST. The teacher will fill out a referral form and will also ask that the parent provides us with the student history form. The second key component is the partnership with parents and guardians as well as our medical professionals. Sometimes when students are having difficulties in class, we have to rule out like biomedical causes first. And it is key that we are all on the same page. A lot of times when families like maybe go to their primary care physician and the doctor asks, how are things at school? They say fine, especially if the child behaves well. And so we really want to make sure that everybody is on the same page about what's happening in school. At this stage, then like a D cap and the development of targeted interventions. A D cap is our district-wide curriculum accommodation plan. It's mandated by the state and this plan is shows, you know, what is going to be the plan for these struggling students. The next one is progress monitoring, you know, are interventions working? If our interventions are working, we will implement what is called an ICAP, an individualized curriculum accommodation plan for the student. And this plan will be regularly evaluated and reviewed. This way that we can ensure that, you know, we aren't missing any students and that a whole team together is providing support. Next slide. A district-wide accommodation plan. Massachusetts laws require that we have this. It's part of general education. And the main targeted areas in purpose is to assist regular education classroom teachers to help them analyze and accommodate all of their, the various needs of their students. Support services that are available to students through the regular education program, direct and systematic instruction and reading for all students, teacher mentoring and collaboration, and then parental involvement. We are in the process of redeveloping our current D cap. But just to be clear, I want to make sure, you know, there's a difference between accommodations and modifications. What the general education classroom can do with tier one instruction are accommodations. And these are ways to assist students in accessing the curriculum more effectively. Accommodations are provided within the general education classroom and are available to any and all students. Such changes may, are made to provide a student with equal access to learning along with an equal opportunity to be able to show what he or she knows or can do. For many, the suggestive list of accommodations that are found in each school's plan, a lot of people just say, well, that's good teaching practices. But having the plan and having it laid out really brings it to the forefront for teachers to remember not all kids need the exact same type of supports. These accommodations fall under four key categories, the setting, presentation, timing, and response. And accommodations do not change the instructional level or content. So it's not changing anything. It's just really falling under tight goals and flexible means. What goal do we want the student to achieve and how can we help that student achieve that goal? The foundation of our D cap is based off the Universal Design for Learning. Universal Design for Learning is a research-based, concrete educational framework that helps guide the design of learning environments in order to make them accessible and effective for all. UDL can be applied to any discipline or domain and ensures that all learners have access and ability to participate in meaningful, challenging learning opportunities. The three UDL frames follow multiple means of representation, which is the what of what we're learning. Multiple means of action and expression, which is the how of what we're learning. And then multiple means of engagement, which is the why of what we're learning. And on the next slide, I have just a very brief example. This, the D cap is really very long. This is just to show you how it's divided. So we would list, these are a few, just a few of possible assessment accommodations that a teacher can utilize. And then there is a check of whether it is falling under representation, action and expression, and engagement. And it is the plan of the district in the near future to really train teachers and staff on what UDL is, the principles of UDL, because it really will make a difference in how they approach teaching and learning. And I feel like I just gave you something very, very fast. But if anybody had any questions, and there's more to come, this is just a, a brief introduction of what we're trying to set up.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from anybody on the committee? I'm seeing none. It's, it's a lot of work and a lot of coordination and a lot of people involved. But I, I think that you've done a good job outlining what it is you're doing. And education seems to be the master of acronyms. So thank you for taking care of all those acronyms because we see them all the time and it's nice to know what they mean. So we appreciate your work very much. So moving on, we have foreign language presentation.
So this evening, Ms. Beardmore is here to give a little bit of an update. You might recall a few years ago, the committee approved our participation in the program that is the Seal of Biliteracy. So I thought it would be appropriate to get a little bit of an update there. And we, we've been working to prepare to align our curriculum with updated standards as well in the, the world of foreign language, our world language. And I know that Ms. Beardmore is doing something new this year that I was particularly fascinated by. So I asked her to, to talk briefly about that as well. So I'll turn it over to her now.
Am I able to screen share as well?
You should be.
Okay. Okay. So you all, you all can see my world language update?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Okay. So in 2021, the DESI World Language Office of Language Acquisition adopted a new curriculum framework and it hadn't been updated since 1999. So it was long, long overdue. It, it is based on the ACTFIL standards. That is the American Council for the Teaching of Foreign Languages. It's our national organization. And those were pretty much being used by teachers across the country already. So, so it wasn't a shock that, you know, our, the Massachusetts standards changed to reflect those. One thing that's really interesting about the new standards is they have embedded questions of equity with into the, within to the frameworks as well as social, emotional learning. So it's really, you know, I was listening to the presentations today. It's just interesting how it's being implemented and integrated into, into all sorts of different disciplines. And so that's something for, that we'll, we'll need to be learning. So one thing they mentioned, and they're having all kinds of trainings. And I've attended several sort of introductions by the Office of Language Acquisition. I think there's been three. And one thing they mentioned is in a small school that it would, it's going to take longer for us to become in alignment with the frameworks because, you know, for instance, Latin and French, we teach are all levels. And so the, the workload falls on one person to. And so the, the workload falls on one person to put the entire curriculum from level one all the way through AP into alignment. As opposed to a larger school where, you know, a group of teachers can work on level one and then another group can work on level two. So it, it will take us longer to be able to truly become in alignment. The DUCI has done a fantastic job of offering training. And so we're currently working through some of the modules, are releasing a couple every month. And they also have curriculum labs. As well as an alignment guide. So I think there's going to be about 20 different modules and they've only released up to seven at this point. And the next curriculum lab is in May, which I'll be attending as well. So there's a lot of work to do, but it's very, a very exciting time. We'll be also participating in a professional development day on May 2nd. And that was thanks to Heidi Hewitt, having a connection with this teacher, Genevieve Colombo. Who actually was a unit planner for and on the implementation, implementation team for the word language curriculum frameworks. Just thanks to her and to Assistant Principal Brian Duffy that they've arranged this for, for us on Monday. So we'll really get to dig deep into the new frameworks. And so an update on the Seal of Biliteracy, so it's, we've had three years that we've been implementing it. And at, at this point, we've had 15 students total in the district that have received the honor of the Seal of Biliteracy. I'd like to remind, yes, it is wonderful. I'd like to remind everyone that in terms of the number of contact hours that our students have with world language. We actually, on the ACTFIL scale of proficiency, our students don't have the necessary hours to, you know, in a large part achieve the necessary goal of intermediate high, that's the level of proficiency that students need in all domains, meaning speaking, listening, writing, and reading. And so this, these students achieved that, that level, even though they haven't had the contact hours that, that ACTFIL has said are necessary to achieve it. So it really is fantastic. We're still waiting on results for this year. They, they were so quick with our initial testing in March. And then now we tested right before vacation and so I thought it would come back over break and then we're still waiting. So where, you know, the, the students keep coming by to, to check with me. I said, I swear, I, I tell them I'm checking, I'm checking three times a day and come back yet, so we will update that obviously. And then lastly, I love to explore new strategies in my classroom that are effective in improving student proficiency. And I began a free voluntary reading program in the classroom and I used books from when the previous teacher was there, the retired teacher that she left. I have purchased many books, I love reading myself anyway. And these two quotes here are two language acquisition gurus that that have really pushed first teachers to begin to adopt reading in their classroom and I've been wanting to do it for years and I finally did this year. And so this is just a quick little picture of what's happening. The picture in the middle is the library and that was provided by this valley, it wasn't being used. I actually have figured out I need to change it, it's just too I'm adding to it all the time, so it, it needs to be reorganized. And then the other two pictures are just some of my students reading at the beginning of class, we read for 10 minutes, three days a week. And at the end, at the conclusion of the reading. They, they just reflect real quick, turn to a partner, we report out about the books. When they finish them, they put little stickers on them that to rate whether or not they like it or not. And it's incredible because we're creating a community of, of readers and they, they, they talk about which books are their favorite. And friends will read the same book at the same time if I have, if I have copies of the same book. It's just been wonderful and so you can see there I have obviously done assessments to find, to find out what they believe in terms of their growth, has this been beneficial? And have they enjoyed it? And it's really been, the majority have enjoyed it and have learned from it. In a very, I think I, at this point, only one student has said, if you could get rid of that, would you? And only one student said, yes. So I think it's been very successful. And I really feel like it's a moment that I get to share with the students and learn with them because I'm reading the books too. And so we, we talk about them and it's just this wonderful learning community. And that's it, I think I used up a little bit more time than I was supposed to, but I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the committee that has a question for Mrs. Beardmore? I can't see you, so sing out if you do. I'm not hearing anybody with a question. I think it's a wonderful idea to have the kids reading. Because as that, that's how as a early elementary school teacher, I knew the more they read, I could teach them how to read. But having them actually do the reading is how they learn and I'm sure that it transfers to the foreign language as well. I think that's a great idea. So I appreciate all your time and effort on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have next TCP Future Programs. And that would be Dr. Burnham.
So at our last meeting, Mr. Leighton brought forward a question that really originated with the Municipal Building Committee. Relative to, you know, what would be the contingency plan if with a renovation project at TCP or a new build? If there were not space to accommodate the school programs that are currently located at TCP. So I worked with my team and we brainstormed different things and thought about different options and some options would involve some pretty substantial investment to secure additional space. As an example, you know, a portable classroom would be one example. So I am going to preface my, my summary here of our findings by saying that we are attempting to give you an honest answer about what we think we are capable of doing. Given what we know as our factors and context now. Context can change in the years ahead, which could lead us to different conclusions in a different context, but knowing what we know now in giving some consideration. Should a move like this have to happen sometime in the near future? This, this is what we've come to. So there are four programs currently housed at TCP. We have our extended day program, which is our before and after school. We have our Early Learning Center. We have our Community School Link Services Program, that's a grant-funded program through the Early Education and Care Department at the state level. And we also have our ACE program. So relative to the extended day program. We would have to move the program back to the Turkey Hill and the primary school cafeterias. It's important to note that the program was consolidated to the one location here at TCP three years ago because there were safety and operational and staffing concerns with the, with the location and the space that we had available to operate the program prior. So if we returned to the two school cafeterias. We feel strongly that the enrollment at each of those locations would have to be significantly reduced. Again, for staffing ratios and safety concerns. And the activities of the program will end up being significantly limited. Up here at TCP, we have a donated pool table, we've had a foosball table, we have a Wii station. We have a room set up with tables for students to use Chromebooks and do homework or have quiet time. We, we have a variety of activities, crafts, et cetera, that we can do from this particular location that we're not going to be able to continue to provide if we have to be relocated to the cafeteria. At the, at the lower schools. Additionally, again, this is the context that we know. We have staff who have been with the program a number of years. They are veteran staff. This is the staff that we count on to be able to operate the program because the high school staff that we hire. Their, their schedules change, there's a rotation, it's those are not the, the staff that sustain the program. It's our long-term staff that, that have sustained the program. And they, having had experience with the program prior, located in the cafeterias at Turkey Hill and the primary school, have expressed considerable reluctance to remain with the program. If and when that relocation should occur. With that as a factor that we're aware of. There's a possibility that staffing for the program could become a significant challenge and we've expressed throughout the course of this year and last, that we have had staffing challenges with this program. So to see the exit of our long-term staff that have been able to sustain the program. It's, it's a challenge. And we may come to a critical point where staffing becomes our limiting factor. And we may have to eliminate the program at some point. So again, I'm not trying to create, you know, doomsday, worst case scenario, we have to stay at TCP. These are just the facts as we see them in our current context with the information that we know right now. Conditions can change three, four, five, six years out from here. But this is what we're recommending based on what we know now. The Early Learning Center. Currently, we do not have the space to house this school day. This program occurs during the school day. It's a play school program. We don't have room in one of our lower schools to house this program. We would likely be eliminating this program. I think it's important to note that the Early Learning Center is not a licensed preschool. We do not have a licensed preschool teacher. This is a play school, it's a play group for learning. And I think it's important in the current context, as you know. Earlier, within this year, there was a lot of conversation about legislation at the federal level. Promoting universal pre-K. I know that it was a priority for EEC at the state level. To, to work towards implementing a universal pre-K. If ever we got traction on that and legislation was passed. This iteration of a preschool program would be eliminated anyway because we'd be transitioning to of a more robust preschool program with licensed teachers. So in other words, this is there, there are other factors to consider relative to this program as well. Relative to the grant-funded Community School Link Services Program. As I said, it's grant-funded, it's year-to-year, there has been talk over several years. It seems to be a little bit more stable at the moment, but a handful of years ago, there was talk that the, the funding may not continue. We would look to try to maintain this program, you know, and possibly utilize space maybe at the public library for some of the parent education sessions. However, as with any other grant, there are stipulations and requirements. One such requirement current, currently with the grant, and again, this is based on our current context. It's a requirement that this program have a dedicated office phone. So it's not a shared program office, it has to have a dedicated line for this program and that's a stipulation in, in the grant. So if we can't meet the requirements in a new location, there's a possibility that we won't be able to continue to secure the grant. And then potentially this program would be dissolving as well. And relative to the ACE program for a variety of reasons. We do not have an appropriate space within our schools currently. So at this point, we feel that we'd be looking for our students to be placed in a similar program in another district. We've also considered the opportunity of reaching out to neighboring communities to see if we could co-op with them and maybe cost share. The operational cost of running the program for our, for our students to be able to participate in their program. None of this is ideal. But, but given what we know for context right now. This is a likely course, if, if something were to have to be done relatively soon. You know. If there's funding available, we could certainly reconsider if, if there's a space and funding available for as I said, portable classrooms, some sort of significant renovation to section off a portion of one of our schools to separate our ACE program. But I mean, I, I think that those options that we talked about are cost prohibitive, given our, our, our current context. Again, we are very open to ongoing conversation about this and, and consistent and continuing reassessment of conditions and options. But that's, that's the best response I can give you right now, knowing what we know in our current context.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question for Dr. Burnham about that? Mr. Leighton?
Thanks, I would just say I think this is, it doesn't come too much of a surprise when, when Dr. Burnham had come to our meetings at the TCP Building Design Committee that it was that we're using the space at TCP, but at the worst case, we can, yeah, we have these other options which are not ideal. And she says that throughout our meetings that she attended. I just wanted to, I guess, throw out the idea too that if, I guess the concern is the TCP building, if it's renovated, I think there's a concern that new space, it's going to be more expensive to, to build it for classrooms. Maybe it makes sense to have that used space like it currently is. Maybe there's not a renovation and a wing, that's a possibility potentially. But also maybe other buildings become available, like maybe the Ritter Building or the, the Town Hall opens up and there's more space there. So we just, we're able to reassess that and, and see if those are potential options for any of those programmings too. And just to, as we progress, we'll kind of
Yeah, absolutely. 100% totally agree with that.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I would also agree that, you know, if you don't know the whole story, what, how everything is going to shuffle. You don't know what the options are and that is predictably what what Dr. Burnham has prepared, is predictably what would happen if all of a sudden the building disappeared.
Right. And we have to rely on our school space to absorb the programs without a major budgetary impact, you know, a significant construction-type redesign to to provide a designated space for any one of these programs. But yeah, absolutely open to ongoing reassessment of options along with the the committee as they continue with their their assessment and their dialogue around options.
I think one more thing to add to is I think we all know that government, town government can work really slowly too. So I also say we don't want to panic and wait to see what the TCP and the Building Design Committee, how they progress to.
Right. Like I indicated, there are other factors at play, like with the Early Learning Center. If a push gets more gets any traction and there's legislation passed around universal pre-K, that impacts the existence of the current Early Learning Center, right? That would go away because we would have a pre-K program for all the residents here in town. So again, there's there's a lot of factors that come into play with making these decisions. But but that's that's the the nuts and bolts of what we came up with. And we did, we talked all kinds of ideas. But but this is the the most honest reflection that I can give you at at this point, knowing what we know currently and the parameters we have currently.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll just add that I'll share that with the the committee. We have a meeting on Monday at 6:00 PM. There is a public comment section if any of the public would like to come and speak as well.
Thank you. Okay, on to old business. We have a final approval of the Galapagos trip.
So I'll invite Mrs. Kirin to share with you what she has to present for you for consideration.
Thanks for having me. I'm here for a final, excuse me, I'm here to request for a final approval for what was the June 2020 Galapagos trip, which turned into the June of 2021 Galapagos trip. And finally, we're going to jump on a plane this June of 2022, if you guys say it's okay. You've got some information, I think, that Dr. Burnham passed along. There's nine students going, about half of them are underclassmen. And about half of them are the upperclassmen that had originally signed up as sort of freshmen sophomores. And now, of course, they're juniors and seniors, but they're still still super excited to go. I think we're finally all letting our guard down and allowing the excitement to really take over for us. Mrs. Sabatini is my ride or die, and she's coming with me. We make a great team, whether it's good cop, bad cop, or just a lot of fun and enjoy the kids. We know all of the kids pretty well already. I've been having meetings on Tuesday mornings during homeroom, just so to get to know you kind of meeting, so they feel super comfortable with us, especially if we haven't had them in class. And I've had a few parent meetings and been in contact with them through email every step of the way with updates and information and presentations that, you know, the company Education First, you know, gives me to give to them to keep them well informed. I am very pleased to say that the company itself has been traveling. Well, they've been traveling for many, many years, but this year, of course, with all the craziness and the upticks and stuff, but they sent a bunch of trips out in February, March, and during the April vacations, and have had less than a 1% issue, less than 1% of the travels have had any issues with COVID-related issues. And so that's very promising. We, they also have included what they call basically like a peace of mind program now that's included in the trip cost that basically covers anything that we need if we're abroad or when we're abroad, any sort of help, doctors, connections, testing, hotel lodging, and new air flights home, obviously, to get these kids home if anyone has to quarantine and stay abroad. And where there's two chaperones going, I'm not sure if I would be the one that would stay back or Mrs. Sabatini would be. I would probably be the one, but they're actually even willing to, if needed, fly parents to the location where the kids are. So I'm I'm pretty confident that we won't have to use them, but it's nice to know that those safeguards are in place as we deal with this stuff.
That's good to hear. Those were some of my questions. So.
Okay. Any more questions?
Anyone else have a question? All right then, we have no no further questions. So do I have a motion from someone to grant final approval for this long-time coming trip? Ms. Shapiro?
I'll make a motion to grant final approval for the 2022 Galapagos trip.
Mrs. Kelly?
I'll second that.
And roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schoolenbrini?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes.
I'm so excited for you, Dawn, and the kids. This is going to be amazing.
Yes, we really can't wait. So thank you again for allowing us to go. It's it's going to be a life-changing opportunity for all of us.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, the FY22 budget update.
Hi, Mike Cassidy, Business Manager, again. Let me let me try this. Let's see this. So for the public, this is the document that the the school committee receives. This is a quarterly report, by the way, on the FY21 budget. The report is broken out to salary and wages by school. And then we have the athletic department and then expenses. So if it's not a salary and wage, if it's not paying someone's salary, then it's an expense. So we have some negatives here. And you know, for the school committee, this is this 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 one right here with the 4995. That's still a COVID line item that, you know, it hasn't increased in a while, but you know, I'm hoping that some money is freed up within the other expense accounts that can I can offset that that balance. This one doesn't seem to go away either, but it's going to go away. This is this is a service of the SNAP for the nurses. And we just got the the grants. It's it's going to be reimbursed by a grant. And I'm just retrieving the invoices for Town Hall to to swap that expense to the grant. So that that's going to go away. These three grounds and facility negative balances were reconciled this evening with the expenditure transfer. And I think that's it. I think we're in excellent shape budget-wise going into the last two months. The my goal is to to spend as much money down as possible. So any surplus funds will be used. Any identified surplus funds will be used for purchases. So we're anticipating potentially some computer purchases, student devices in classrooms. So as that number becomes more and more clear, we'll start soliciting quotes and answering requisitions. So over the last week, some districts, and not every single district in the Commonwealth, got an announcement from the Finance Office from DASI. And Lunenburg got one today, the other day, this over the last week. And it awarded the Lunenburg Public Schools an additional $18,800. This, and I'm just going to paraphrase the the email that is sitting in front of me. It's a it's a one-time assistant payment to districts with pandemic-related enrollment loss. So our our information, our data tripped into some threshold that we we this is, it's almost like a student opportunity adjustment with the the foundation budget. So we got a little extra money. So this is this is money that we have to spend before June 30. And, you know, we we would like to, there's no, let me just say, there's no guidelines. This is not S R funds. It doesn't have to be set to any behavior programs or COVID-related supplies. It's it's it just it's treated like Chapter 70 money. And we were contemplating using that for looking at getting a new scoreboard for the the high school field, the trail field. We had a vendor out today looking at the challenges of the project, and it's something that we're going to have to bid. And it should come in around that amount, maybe even a little bit more. But if this is premature, Dr. Burnham, please let me know about about the 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 Class of 22. Is it? Okay, all right. They're they're they want to to make a donation for the replacement of the scoreboard as well. So that 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 money from the gift of of the outgoing class with some of this additional money we're looking to use for to replace the scoreboard. It's something that we've been talking about for a long time. I've 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 gotten involved in it. It's that that scoreboard has served Lunenburg very well. It's time to retire it and and get a get a replacement. So that that's one of the purchases that we're, that's the purchase that we're using or proposing to use for that additional money. As I said, we're in good shape. Going into the end of the school year, there's not going to be any deficits in in our accounts. It's it's, you know, there may be some light adjustments, but not nothing that that'll tip the scales. So that that's what that's what's being proposed right now for that grant money. And so that's another thing I want to be clear. It's 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 a grant money. I've I've got to report it out to the state as grant. It's not going to go into the Chapter 70 funds. I don't think it'll be reported in any formula with a foundation grant or a maintenance of effort with the town. So it's strictly a grant that that can be used for for any educational purposes. So with that being said, I know I'm kind of, it seems like I'm all over the place, but I I want to turn the thoughts and comments on on the grant that we we just received. And also any thoughts and comments on the budget update.
Alrighty, is there anyone on the committee that has a comment or a question for Mr. Cassidy? I'm not seeing any. I I think I think it's lovely that that they came up with this $18,000. And it it's nice recognition that, you know, when the October 1 numbers come through, we were lower than usual. So it it shows that the state is trying to even the board a little bit. And I think the scoreboard is a great idea. And many thanks to the Class of 22 for wanting to see something done with the scoreboard.
We're we're in a little bit of a time pinch too. So that's, you know, we've got to encumber those funds as soon as possible.
Sure, sure. And as as always, your explanation of the quarterly budget is very clear, and we know exactly where everything has gone and what's going on with it. So I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the personnel update.
Mute it, Mike.
Sorry, this is Mike Cassidy, Human Resource Director. In front of the school committee is the Personnel Report. It's been a while since, I think it was in December was the last report. Most notably, on page one, are other retirements, I believe, at the last at the last school committee meeting, when I presented the Personnel Report, I did mention Ms. Parnasik, the cook manager at the Middle High School, retired on December 31. Some new retirements is Robert Roy, who was the maintenance worker here at TCP Central Office. Nancy Chapdallane, teacher down at the primary school, is retiring this year. And finally, Charles Swift, a longtime senior custodian at the primary school, is also retiring. We are aware of another teacher retirement, but I don't believe it's been announced at the school yet. So that will probably either be on the next report or the employee will be at the retirement reception in June. And then also included in that report are the list of resignations and new hires from the Lunenburg Public Schools. So just want to let the committee know that we are starting to post some known positions for next school year that we think that will impact some transfers within and open up positions. We'll be ending up hiring new employees from outside the district. We have some potential finalists for the Director of Facilities and Grounds. So we're looking forward to meeting with that group of applicants and getting someone on board as soon as possible. Hopefully by the summertime, because there's a lot of work that goes on during the summer. So that's a good update. There's some good candidates in that we think. Other than that, that's that's all the personnel information I want to provide tonight. This is just a report of progress. There's no action by the school committee.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? Nope. All right. Thank you. So next is the Strategy for Continuous Improvement Summary of Progress.
Alrighty. So I'm not going to go through all 10 of the action plans and the progress that's been made. But you can see, this is the progress as of today. And notes have been added. You might recall that I provided a progress update earlier in the year. But this is the most updated information relative to progress made. You'll see similar notes in all of the the action plan documents. They are all also posted on the website, so the community can look at these as well. Um, they are all also posted on the website, so the community can look at these as well. Um, where applicable, I did note, um, that, um, you know, information had been presented to the school committee. We've had many, many presentations over the last six, seven, um, uh, school committee meetings. So you should have a good sense of all that's updated here in these documents already. Um, and I did note, uh, because this work really is mapped out for the entire school year. So some of the action steps we're still working on. Um, and if we anticipate bringing forward a presentation to provide you an update and information on any of these, um, uh, action steps and benchmarks, uh, I have noted that there's a presentation in, in June or in May. Um, just for your, for your reference. Um, it just, I think it lets you know that we're on track to, to complete the work that we mapped out for the year. So again, there are ten of these action plans. There is one, um, that focuses on revisiting our core values. And that work, um, the timeline on that action plan is actually twenty twenty-three through twenty-five. Um, I can say that in conversation with the consultant that you all authorized me to move forward with on our equity audit. Um, she agrees that, uh, work on our core values is a natural, um, uh, progression of the work that we're going to do as we conduct an audit, um, and address and take action on the recommendations that she may have for us. So that work is, is definitely, uh, coming up on the horizon for sure. Um, so again, you have access to these. The community has access to all of these as well. Additionally, I have provided you with an updated, uh, quick, brief narrative summary um, of the evaluation goals. Uh, those four goals that you all approved, um, for my evaluation for this year. You might recall that, um, goal one, our student learning goal, and goal two, our professional practice goal, were district-wide goals last year. And the, um, staff at the union had indicated some interest in maintaining that as a, a district-wide goal for another year. So you see that here. I'll call to your attention that I have updated, um, the, the crossover back to specific action plans in the strategy. Because a lot of that work, um, you know, is, it's been, the progress has been provided in those documents. And, um, what's been outlined in each of these goals connects back to some of the action steps that are outlined in action plans, uh, for the strategy. Um, it occurred to me that, um, I probably never reassessed those and looked at those again, and they just got carried forward from last year. But you might recall, I said at the beginning of this year, I wrote up new, new action plans largely targeted for, for execution this year. So I've removed anything that, um, was in my original document presented for approval at the start of um, this year, uh, to reflect here currently, uh, the accurate alignment back to the different, um, action plans in the strategy. Um, I have inserted into this document a field where you have a brief, um, narrative overview, um, that points you back to different presentations that have occurred at, at different meetings throughout the course of this year, as well as to the action plans for the different, uh, priorities and objectives. Um, I will, uh, reiterate that if, if there's more information that you want to see, more specific information, examples of things that are outlined, um, in this document, happy to connect with you on that. Um, or if, uh, you know, you'd want to have a one-on-one to discuss or have a better understanding um, of, of any of this work, just so that you, uh, you feel confident that you understand everything that, that has been, uh, worked on over the course of this year. So again, for each of the goals, uh, at the end, um, I've inserted that field to give you that narrative. Um, summary. And this document is also posted, uh, and accessible to the community. Um, available on our website under the school committee, um, meetings and the documents attached to tonight's meeting.
Thank you. That's, that's a lot of detail that's very helpful in finishing up evaluations. Um, are there any comments from the committee of questions? Mr. Layton?
Any questions? I, it may be that I'm just not good with Google Docs too, but I couldn't find the evaluation template. Eh, I don't know if we are in evaluation folder. I know last year we had like an evaluation folder, twenty twenty-one, that had the template in there.
If you go, if you go to the, um, workshop.
The workshop.
On March twenty-third, you see a whole bunch of templates. The one that I abused is the one that Dr. Burnham filled out with her goals already in it. So I didn't have to wreck my brain to.
I remember seeing it. I just couldn't find it.
So you can just, if you go in, yeah, if you go in and you open that template, make a copy. And that will be your copy that you can fill in. So if each of you make your own copy, um, it's a separate document. You won't all be contributing to the same document if you make a separate copy.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Burnham.
Thank you.
And now we have the third reading of policy twelve oh two facilities.
At long last.
At long last. I hate it. Looks like we made it, like that song. Um, so who would like to do the third reading? As that has to be read aloud.
Tony, do you want to take it or do you want me to take it? Oh, I don't know. Just because we're members of the same committee. Usually the members who are on the policy subcommittee who do the reading. So I'm fine either way.
No, you can read it. I have no interest.
Let me just, uh, go back into my drive. Sorry, I closed out. Um, all right. And the right one.
A copy of this is also posted on the website.
Perfect. All right, I got a community relations one thousand, community use of school facilities twelve hundred, regulations governing the use of school facilities twelve oh two. It is the policy of Lunenburg School Committee to permit responsible organizations where the main purpose is to benefit the citizens of Lunenburg, the use of school buildings and athletic fields to the extent that there is no interference with the educational programs. The complete control of school buildings and equipment is by law vested in the school committee and the administration of the rules and regulations governing the buildings is delegated to the superintendent of schools or his or her designee. Use of school facilities shall be granted within the limits prescribed in chapter seventy-one, section seventy-one of the Massachusetts General Laws and Acts in Amendment or Addition thereto. This policy covers all functions or events which are held in the Lunenburg Public Schools after school hours, Monday through Friday and any time on Saturdays and Sundays. School facilities are not available to private individuals for personal profit. Non-school organizations utilizing the schools are charged custodial costs and fees based upon a schedule approved by the school committee. Facility rental fees for Lunenburg governmental bodies executing governmental functions will be waived, but custodial and other related event costs will be charged. Facility rental fees for town recreational sponsored programs with the exception of youth sports seasonal programs will be waived. Custodial or other related costs will be charged. Priorities for use of school facilities. Use of the school facilities for annual town meeting and for polling is reserved for the town on the first and third Saturdays in May and the first Tuesday in November. During annual town meeting, the school facilities and grounds will not be available for use other than scheduled academic testing. Priorities for school facilities, including buildings, playgrounds, and athletic fields shall be as follows. One, Lunenburg school activities, um, including student performances, student athletic events, dances, graduation, school councils, school committee, et cetera. Two, Lunenburg community school programs and activities. Three, Lunenburg school support groups, PTO, PACSEL, et cetera. Four, Lunenburg town-related and Lunenburg youth sport organizations. I think we have an error in our numbering here. Um, I think next should be five, but it's labeled a six. Lunenburg youth-related nonprofit organizations such as the Scouts. Uh, next would be Lunenburg nonprofit groups. Next would be community recreational use, non-scheduled Lunenburg residence use of tennis courts, basketball courts, track fields, and playgrounds, followed by all other. Scheduling priority. Number one, Lunenburg Public School activities receive priority over other organizations for the use of buildings and fields. Two, Lunenburg Public Schools administration, faculty, and staff are required to complete applications for the use of their own buildings and fields. Cancellations. One, scheduled activities may be preempted by Lunenburg Public School activities only with the permission of the superintendent of schools and provide a notice of no less than seventy-two hours is given to their permitted organization. Number two, on days when school has been canceled because of emergency conditions, the school buildings and grounds may not be available. However, all scheduled use will be automatically be canceled unless the renter contracts the school being rented to confirm the availability of the school. Conditions of use all, use all facilities. Conditions of use all facilities. All facilities used requests must be, uh, use requests must be completed online. Contact the director of facilities for access to the system. Certificates of insurance, if applicable, must be submitted to the director of facilities. One, it is required that all renters obtain and review this policy in its entirety. All renters must sign an acknowledgement form indicating that they have received and reviewed this policy. Two, there are certain restrictions upon the use of school property and the building. The user is solely responsible for the fulfillment of the regulations of the following. A, State Department of Public Safety. B, State and Local Fire Laws. C, State and Local Police Laws. D, Internal Revenue Admission Laws. E, State Laws relating to the rental of school facilities. Three, organizations, any group or entity excluding the Lunenburg Public Schools, using school buildings or grounds under a permit from the superintendent's office are restricted to the use of the rooms and/or spaces assigned to them. Participants found wandering unsupervised in a school building will be immediately escorted out of the facility. The sponsor of the activity will be notified. Four, organizations using school buildings will use only one designated entry and exit. An adult and individual over the age of twenty-one must be present during the entire duration of the activity to monitor and control the entering and existing, exiting of children participating in the activity. Organizations are required to provide adult supervision at the entrance of the facility during the entire duration of the event to ensure the safety of the participants and the facility. Five, specific bathroom facilities will be designated for use, and only those bathrooms will be accessible. The organization using the building will be responsible for monitoring these bathrooms. Six, use of tobacco, under nicotine products, alcohol, marijuana, and any other illicit substances are prohibited on school property. Seven, the applicant must be present throughout the time the facilities are being used. The applicant is responsible for the decorum of the group, including spectators. Eight, when minors are using a facility, they are required to have supervision on a one-to-ten ratio basis. At least one adult twenty-one or older must be present at all times. Nine, food and/or beverages are only permitted in cafeterias or the all-purpose rooms. Eating and drinking in auditoriums or gymnasiums is not permitted. Only prepackaged food and beverages for resale are allowed through the concession stand. Ten, any damages sustained to the facility and/or equipment during its use will be considered the responsibility of the renting organization. The renting organization will be billed for any repairs needed to restore the facility and/or equipment to its original state. Eleven, no electrical apparatus shall be connected to any lighting system unless it is first inspected and approved by the district-approved auditory manager or technical staff personnel. Twelve, in all cases where gymnasiums are used for athletic purposes, participants are required to wear athletic shoes. Thirteen, cleats or tarp shoes are not permitted on the track. Participants must not put cleats or tarp shoes on until participants are on the turf field. Fourteen, school kitchens are available only when proper lunchroom employees are employed at an additional expense to supervise and protect the interests of the Lunenburg Public Schools. Applicants must contact the food services director to arrange for the specifics and receive an estimate of the cost. Fifteen, entrance to the property shall be permitted only via the designated entrance for the school in use. All doors to the facility shall remain locked at all times, except that custodial personnel shall unlock main entry doors for the entrance by authorized groups as scheduled fifteen minutes before and after the scheduled start. Sixteen, access to the facility will be available only as indicated on the approved application form. Seventeen, equipment of the building used, such as scenery and furniture, may not be moved in or out of the building during school hours. Eighteen, anyone utilizing the middle school or high school auditorium must employ school personnel appropriately trained to operate the lighting curtains, drops, scenery, et cetera. It is the policy of the Lunenburg Public Schools not to loan school materials and equipment to individuals or groups. Nineteen, all vehicles are strictly prohibited from parking in fire lanes. There shall be no double parking. There shall be no parking and handicap designated spaces without proper R and V issued placards or license plates. This will be enforced by the Lunenburg Police Department, and violators are subject to being ticketed and or towed. Twenty, there shall be no parking or driving on any school property in conjunction with any function unless prior approval is, prior approval is granted by the superintendent. Upon approval, a permit will be issued and must be displayed while on school grounds. Any vehicles on school property must be operated by licensed drivers. Twenty-one, all non-school or town governmental related activities must be completed and the premises vacated by ten P M. Personnel. Twenty-two, custodian on duty shall be responsible for the supervision of the building and equipment. Safety precautions to the building, cleaning of the building after its use, and for any services required by the renter in accordance with the use of the facilities approved. Twenty-three, custodians have no responsibility to groups other than as described above. Twenty-four, police coverage may be required for a particular activity. The applicant is responsible for making those arrangements and for payment of the same. Twenty-five, school facilities are not available for use without a custodian on duty. Advertising. The district is not responsible for advertising of non-school events. Any advertising associated must identify by name the sponsoring group. Insurance coverage. Huh, the organization shall prepare and maintain insurance against claims for injuries or losses to persons or properties that are alleged to have arisen in connection with the activities underlying this application of the organization and any agents, representatives, or employees. Insurance companies must be licensed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or otherwise acceptable to the school department. The cost of such insurance, including required endorsements or amendments, shall own, shall be the sole responsibility of the organization. Full disclosure is required by any non-standard exclusions. One, a copy of certification of insurance with minimum limits of three million for, three million dollars for general liability covering bodily injury and property damage combined and personal injury must be attached to this application and forwarded to the director of facilities for review prior to the date of activity and before final approval for use is granted. Two, all certificates of insurance must include the town of Lunenburg as additionally, additional named insured. Cleanup. One, neither the school department nor its custodian on duty assumes any responsibility for liability to the property of the renter. All decorations of two, all decorations, furniture, trash, and other materials used shall be removed immediately by the renter after the completion of the function. All decorations must be fire resistant. Changing equipment, electrical adjustments, driving nails, or hanging decorations shall only be done with the consent of the director. At no time shall objects be attached to stage curtains. Three, Lunenburg Public Schools will not be responsible for any material left behind. Such materials will not be saved, and the renting organization will be charged for removal. Costs. One, custodial costs are charged to the using organization. Two, fees for building use are established by the school committee on a regular basis. The rental charge for the use of school facilities will be a fixed fee plus expenses for a services list of below. All groups will be charged hourly for the custodial auditorium, control booth, or cafeteria services if warranted. Three, costs for trash disposal may be charged to a using organization if the event requires dumpster pickup in addition to the regular scheduled pickup period. The building principal and athletic director, in conjunction with the director of facilities, shall have the responsibility for determining the amount of service help necessary for any rental. The final cost for any rental will be determined by multiplying the flat rate per hour by the duration of rental and adding the cost of service records required. The time of the custodial services charge will necessarily include the time required to prepare the particular facility for the rental, the time the facility is in use, and finally, the time required to restore the facility for school use following the rental. Community recreational use. Recreational public use of the facilities must be consistent with the uses for which it was designed. The district will have the authority with school committee approval to post signage on campus indicating prohibited uses. Permit or request for use of school. Permit or request for use of school facilities may not be granted where the proposed use or activity is prohibited or inconsistent with the uses for which the space or facilities are designed. Vote to Lunenburg School Committee, October twentieth nineteen ninety-nine, reviewed school, Lunenburg School Committee, November seventh, two thousand and one, and January eleventh, two thousand and sixteen. Revised and approved July sixteenth, two thousand and seven, and April twenty-seven, two thousand and sixteen. Updated and approved May thirty, two thousand and seventeen, updated and approved October seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, updated and approved. I just lost my. Updated and approved May first, two thousand and nineteen, updated and approved January twentieth, two thousand and one. I may have missed a date there.
And you did it. Thank you very much. Dr. Burnham, has there been any contact from anybody in the community about the policy?
No.
No. All right, then I would take a motion after three readings of the policy to approve the policy. Mr. Layton.
I did have a comment. So I, I understand this policy needs to get through, and I think it, I think the committee and the superintendent would, would agree that I think that we've had a lot of concerns about the policy that it needed updating and changing because of what was going on, and we've made those changes. Uh, and, but I also, I do have a concern that there was some there was some concern about other parts of this policy, so I, I would recommend that the, the policy subcommittee at a later date, it doesn't have to be, uh, now or soon, but I think look over it and and, and look for ways that we can make it so that we, we don't have to readjust so often, I guess, too, with this policy, but I think specifically with what was brought up before about the food. I think things can change with the food, and I think just having something a little bit more generic might be more fitting, but something to look at in the future, I think.
Yep, I, I definitely agree.
And there were those two, um, things that need fixing before posting the, the numbers, the numbering priorities. And under conditions of use, number four, existing was supposed to be exiting. Um, Laura corrected it as she read it, but that needs to be fixed as well. So, um, if there's no other comments, do we have a motion to approve? Ms. Shapiro.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, policy twelve oh two facilities.
And a second. Mrs. Kelly.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schoenbrini.
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Layton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshambo.
Yes. Thank you very much. This was a long process, took a lot of persistence. So, thank you for working through this policy. Um, Next on the agenda is a discussion of the primary school A C, A C project update. So where are we with this?
Uh, Mike Cassidy, um, Business Manager, so I'll, I'll jump in first. So just a, a general update, um, and, and I know the school committee is aware of this, but, uh, we're working with, uh, an engineering company. Naring, Narin, Sarani Engineering Company, and they're providing, they're doing a peer review on the proposal by, uh, did, uh, to, to Juriel. And, um, so we, we've provided regional construction documents uh, to, to our, our engineer, the, for, for the peer review. And, um, uh, so they ran into a little bit of a challenge because the original engineers that worked on this project for, not the, like, the original, but the, the new proposed, uh, air conditioning um, project down at, uh, at the primary had left uh, de jour, de jour, I keep on wanting, I keep on wanting to say de jour, no, like the, the pizza, but so, you know, just, just be patient with me. The, uh, so they, they had left. So th- they're, uh, they're, they're scrambling to get a team together to work with, um, uh, the Jeff R. Consultant that, to do that peer review. Uh, I did speak to our, our contact today. And, uh, he's ready, he's almost ready to make some sort of uh, recommendation or memo to the school department. He's, uh, there's two things, which is he's meeting with the electrical uh, engineer tomorrow. And, um, the mechanical engineer for the, the firm is on vacation until next week. But he's, he's not a hundred percent certain that he needs to speak with him, so uh, we'll, we'll, we'll get a, we'll get an update, um, from them tomorrow. So that, that's moving forward as far as getting a, uh, some sort of comment or reflection on uh, the, the A C unit. Uh, The Superintendent and I, uh, had a phone call with the town manager, just, just concerned about information getting out, um, in a timely fashion, if we have any uh, that, that could or would impact the, uh, that project on, on the, the capital expense budget. Um, expense, a capital project, uh, uh, going in front of town, um, the town meeting on, on the seventh. She is, she is, uh, had recommended that is, that's moving forward, uh, no matter what, and, um, you know, that uh, a decision, she's making a recommendation that, that, that those, some of those decisions can be made afterwards. And, uh, if additional funding is, is needed that, uh, you know, that we'll look at different funding sources, whether it's through grants, uh, school budget, town budget. Um, you know, if it's drastic, maybe it's, uh, holding off and, you know, maybe another appropriation at town meeting in the fall. You know, so that, that is, uh, we don't have all the answers to make, uh, to make a, a solid decision. It's kind of like the T C P uh, comments that, from Dr. Burnham, uh, earlier. Um, We don't have all the facts just yet. All, uh, all we can report out is that, uh, the architects are working together. The project is going forward on, uh, the town meeting. Uh, there may be some discussion, we may, you know, we'll provide some feedback. Uh, but it's still the recommendation from the town manager that it goes forward, it moves forward on a bid. And that'll give us a little time to, uh, to work on the plans and specifications. That's all I got. Uh, Dr. Burnham, uh, what about you? Is there something that, um?
No, I think you covered everything.
Okay. So, um, as soon as we have information, we'll, uh, if we get a report from the, the, the engineering firm, we'll shoot it out to the school committee, just so you know what, uh, they're recommending.
We'll also share it with the town manager so that she can make the, um, the finance committee and the, uh, select board, uh, members aware of that information as well.
Thank you. I think that's all you can do. It ended up being an unfortunate circumstance, the way it all came down, but, um, you're, you're doing all you can do to get the information, so.
Yep.
Not else we can do.
No, it's, um, constant emails, um, to the, uh, to our engineer, just making sure, and he knew, he understood the deadlines, and he put pressure on the other engineering firm. Knowing that, uh, there was a, uh, there was a timeline attached to this, um, his work. So, and we've seen that via, uh, through emails that he has been corresponding with us, so, um, so every, everyone's trying to, uh, step up and, um, and, and get some informa, get some clarity on some information here.
Okay, any other comments? Well, thank you. Thank you for continuing to push through that.
Okay.
All right, now we have, um, our second public comments. If there's anyone in the public that has a comment they'd like to make, um, Mr. Franco.
Whoops, hello, now I have my microphone on so you can hear me. Uh, so, hold on a second, let me wind up my head. I assume that this is wide open public comment that, about anything even totally unrelated to the agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct. It just has to be related to school.
Okay, this is more of a, um, question than a comment, but, uh, last night's select, and by the way, yeah, just for the record, Lou Franco, two fifty Arbor Street, uh, I am, uh, asking this question in my capacity as liaison to the, uh, school committee from the select board. Uh, but at last evening's select board meeting, there was a discussion around donated commemorative items like benches and planters and trees and, and the naming of those and how long they can remain in place and all of that. This then led to a discussion about uh, naming of more permanent structures and publicly funded structures like buildings and uh, or, or other structures. Um, and the town doesn't currently have a policy on this, but we suspect that the school side does.
Yes.
And we are asking if we can have that to look at, uh, or if you can direct us to, to that, so we can use it as a model.
I would think that would be arranged.
Yep.
Say again?
That's not a problem. We can get that to you.
All right, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have to say, uh, just as a side note, I mean, select board is tough, but when it comes to meetings, you are, you're Olympic athletes.
We win that prize.
Enjoy the rest of the night. I'll listen for the rest.
All right, thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye now. Anyone else with a public comment? Seeing none?
All right, Caroline.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks. Uh, I just wanted to share that I saw something in the news that was exciting and kind of related to, to us, so the, I saw that the Massachusetts House, uh, the spending plan included an extension for the free school meals for next year, so that was, uh, exciting. It hasn't officially gone through, the governor hasn't signed it, but it's definitely on track that, uh, it's likely to happen, so we'll, I'll look forward to seeing that.
Absolutely.
And I'll offer, um, one comment that, uh, we currently have one teacher, uh, in the running, uh, for Teacher of the Year. Uh, so we're, we're waiting to, um, to have that process played out, so, uh, hopefully, hopefully before the, the last school committee meeting of the year, we'll have something more definitive to share. But that's pretty exciting.
That is pretty exciting. All right, we will move on to, um, committee reports, starting with Athletic Advisory.
We have not met. We'll be meeting in June.
All right. Um, Finance Committee, the Finance Committee met on the fourteenth of April. There was discussion about the legality of adjusting the capital plan on the town meeting floor. The town council advises that the capital plan funds can be decreased but not increased by town meeting. Individual items cannot be removed. The total amount is voted on and the town manager is in charge of figuring out the spending. Um, but they are planning on inviting town council to further discuss this issue. Um, They're looking for a final number for the primary A C by town meeting. Um, and the town manager recommended leaving this item in the capital plan, as we just heard. Uh, To Park, The Park Department Report, um, was given by Mr. Passios. The final Marshall Park Plan has been given to the Park Commission. There are three ball fields that will all be new, so there is a softball field and the baseball field, and the outfield do not overlap, as was in the initial plan. Uh, The Architects will supply a suggested phase and approach as the price tag is five point seven million dollars. They're seeking alternative funding so as not to affect the, um, taxpayers. Uh, Mr. Passios also brought up that in the, um, T H E S report at our last meeting, when we were reporting on the climate survey. Um, It was stated that by, by the principal that the survey came out that the Turkey Hill Building was deficient. He wanted to know what the deficiencies were and why they're not being addressed, which is a topic for when we talk about, um, next meetings. Um, I'd, I'd like to go on and talk a little bit about that very briefly. Uh, Mr. Passios also stated that he's stepping down from the Finance Committee. I'd like to thank him for his service to the town, for his attention to detail, and, um, we will miss him on that committee. And then the P T O. Well, the P T O met on, um, April eleventh. And to be perfectly honest, I totally forgot about it, but um, Allison Melvin very nicely sent me, so, or somebody probably told her to, I don't know, but I, I thank her very much for sending me the minutes. So I can tell you what happened. Um, Teacher Appreciation Plans are underway. The schools are being contacted to assure that there are no M C A S conflicts. Bus Driver Appreciation Plans are also underway. The Blue Knight Stickers will be ready for sale at the June event. Elections for next year's offices are coming up. Allison Melvin is not running for reelection as president, and Carrie Miller will not be seeking the election as vice president. So we need some new people. Um, The election meeting is on May ninth. The membership info for the P T O was available at the literacy night at the primary school, and they are meeting on May ninth at seven P M. Um, School Councils, Primary School.
Uh, Primary School met on the eleventh. Talked about Spirit Week, uh, Book Fair, Literacy, Literacy Night, uh, great success there. The, we're in the, the process of the handbook review. Uh, there was discussion about the playground mud, that they're looking into purchasing a play safe, play escape. Um, and then we discussed the paras that, that they are, uh, posting positions and filling them as the, uh, postings come up. And they're even hiring subs, subs to backfill the paras positions as much as possible, just so they have the staffing.
All right, thank you. The, um, Turkey Hill?
We have not met.
And the Middle School. Um, I was supposed to cover that today, but I had another meeting at the same time, and I thought I'd get to it, and I didn't. So we will have to contact Mr. Santry, and if he was still on the call, I would apologize to him because I told them I was coming. But, um, I didn't get there, so.
I noted, two people volunteered because everybody in the school committee really likes to pitch in. I unfortunately had a meeting today from three until five, and two different people said they could do it, so very grateful that people spoke up.
But we didn't get there, so. Um, The High School.
Um, The High School has not met. We were going to be meeting tomorrow, but, um, the handbook meeting, the Handbook Committee is meeting, so we're going to be meeting on Monday instead.
All right, thank you. Um, Capital Planning, I'm assuming has not met. We've talked enough about them tonight anyways, but, um, Wellness Advisory.
We have not met.
PACSEL?
We have not met.
The Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee.
We're meeting Monday on Zoom at six o'clock.
Awesome. Lifelong Learning.
We have not met.
Uh, The Policy Subcommittee.
We haven't met either.
And, um, M A S C Workshop Report. I have a lengthy one. I will zip through it. Um, I did go to the advocacy workshop. There are lots of bills being introduced, but the fact of it is- There are lots of bills being introduced, but the fact of it is, you know, they're being introduced by the House. They haven't been approved by the House or by the Senate, and then who knows if they'll get signed or if they'll even be acted on by the end of the legislative session. However, there is House Bill forty-five thirty-nine on educated diversity, which was touched on by Lisa earlier tonight that talks about an alternative to M T L as difficulty passing M T L is holding back some qualified diversified. Is that how you say that? Candidates, so that was one thing that was in there. And things about recruitment. And House Bill forty-one thirty-eight is about equity in school discipline. It is in the House. They talked about the Student Opportunity Act implementation is on schedule. The Circuit Breaker is funded with some transportation funded with it, is what they said. I don't know if that, I think that meant in the House bill. What happens beyond that, I don't know. The inequities on chapter seventy was brought up, and the thirty dollar hold harmless is being proposed to be made sixty dollar. So where we were at last year that we got next to no funding, we got thirty dollars per child. If that had happened this year, and if this actually passes, we would have gotten sixty. So I don't think it's marvelous, but I think it's better than it was. And I wrote down there are more proposals here than we can cover. Then I did go to part of the day on the hill. That was virtual. So I did that. They are calling for a moratorium on high stakes testing, and that that is M A S C. They are talking about Medicare reimbursements should go to schools, not to towns. But I don't think anybody has proposed that, actually, but that's what they're pushing for. They're pushing to hope to update the open meeting law to allow Zoom meetings. They also talked about that the M S B A has lowered their reimbursement rate. And there's too many schools in the pipeline, and that is on the legislative agenda. So we'll have to watch. Who knows when we're going to get to that, but we'll have to watch that and see what happens, and they said free lunch and breakfast is in the House budget. So that's what I have for M A S A workshop reports.
Did see that they are having an E S R update on Friday, May sixth, next Friday, and then there's also a goal setting one on Friday, June third, if anybody's interested.
Thank you.
Since you brought up the high stakes testing, I just saw too that the Department of Education is discussing raising the the minimum for M C A S testing for high school graduation, so that was a little alarming.
That's a little disheartening.
Yeah.
Okay, so topics for future discussions. Under Turkey Hill, I know that we were going to, we're going to have the town manager come and talk about that. I'd like to know specifically what the conditions are. I mean, I know the building's old, and I know it's not air conditioned. But but what else is wrong in the building? You know, if if we could have that to that discussion, because maybe that would help her with her perspective. And also, it's going to help us figure out capital plan for next year, I would think.
So I can get more information in more detail, but I think, you know, your leading contenders for issues and challenges way, 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 way at the top of the list is the fact that there is no climate control in that building. There's no air conditioning. When when school opens in August, there are days that the conditions are uncomfortable because the humidity in the building is the problem. It's not as much the temperature in the building, although when you've got the combination of a an elevated temperature in the building combined with humidity in the building. You know, it it presents some very uncomfortable teaching environment, so I do know that that is a significant and has been.
Yeah, sure.
But for my tenure, that that has been something that they have talked about repeatedly. You know, they talk about we should have spent E S R money to buy air conditioners for every single classroom. The problem is the electrical system in the building can't support that. There's essentially like one maybe two outlets in the entire classroom. We you plug in 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 A C in every single window, and the circuit is just not going to be able to handle that. So it comes back to it's already on the capital plan in terms of a cost to upgrade the H VAC, a cost to upgrade, you know, the the roof. The the bottom line is that we need a building project. And I think I I think that teachers will feel better once they know what the trajectory is and that there is a plan. A timeline to give some serious consideration and and conversation and action in a direction, whether that's a renovation or a new build. I think that 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 goes a long way. I know that teachers are just frustrated with the conditions. But that that is the most.
That's the overriding.
Yes, I can find out if there are other details and have that ready for that June first meeting, but far and away, that is the major condition in the building that's problematic.
Okay. Anything else for future meetings? We have the insecticide people still there. We haven't got to them.
Is that something that we would want to put on the next meeting agenda? It's a light meeting. I don't know if it's something that you feel all five members need to be present. I don't know that you're you're looking, are they asking you to take action on something?
She she had different information, but before we put it on the agenda, I want to look and see, because it's been a long time. It's been sitting here for quite a while. I want to look and see if that how if the bill is already come and gone.
Okay.
You know, because the idea was that she, they wanted us to
endorse the bill, right?
Yeah.
Bill has already left, though, as Brian says, government does work slowly.
A lot of bills just don't get passed, even.
Yep.
Go to study. But I would just say I would postpone that because I would like to have everybody here, because I know that wasn't spoke last time, so I think it would be good to have everybody for discussion.
Okay.
Okay. And in between that, I will double check and see what I get to find the number of that bill and just see what happened to it. Hey, is there anything else? So do we have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Shapiro.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at ten oh nine P M.
All right, and a second, Mr. Layton.
Second motion.
And can we have a roll call vote?
Mrs. School and Brini.
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Layton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshambo.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good day.
Thank you.